Good morning, good evening. And welcome to the Town Council meeting on Monday, June 26, 2023 at 7:00 PM here in the McKinnon Council chambers. Relative to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, and for the benefit of the public, this meeting is being recorded by both video and audio methods. First order of business is the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for its stand as one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as all.
Roll call, Sue.
Counselor Adams.
Present.
Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor Dow.
Present.
Counselor Marquetti.
Present.
Counselor Monticni.
Present.
Counselor Rivas.
Present.
Counselor Ryan.
Excused.
Counselor Steves.
Present.
We have eight present quorum in the meeting. Item number three, consider and accept the Town Council meeting minutes of Monday, June 12, 2023.
Go move.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Dow, second one by Counsel Rivas. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Item number four, Subcommittee Reports, Department of Public Works, Counsel Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. The DPW Subcommittee had a meeting on June 14th. We discussed Water Department's surplus request. We discussed the four-way stop sign on Pleasant Street, River Street, and Walcott. We discussed the signage for autistic child on Oliver Street. DPW transfer for electricity bills. A DPW transfer for South Street, Amendment Number Three. Transfer for road improvement. DPW transfer for generator repair and a change order for time extension on West Street. We did postpone one agenda item, VHB tip project. Most of these items are on tonight's agenda, starting with Agenda Item Number 27 through 40. We also had a discussion on ongoing projects for road construction on Ellis Road, South Street, West Street, and Main Street. Main Street project repaired to begin July 9th and the 10th. Paving on streets opened up by the utility company. Paving on a private way repairs per Counsel Dow. And we presented the DPW director with a petition. And we also talked about trench permitting. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Certainly, Counsel Adams.
Sorry to bother you, Counselor Marquetti. I couldn't make the meeting because we had the Town Manager's search. The one you postponed, what was that about?
VHB wanted to do a, wanted some funding to start doing, looking at properties along that area. And the committee members had a lot of questions for Peg Dean, but she wasn't able to attend the meeting. So they asked that it get postponed to the next DPW Subcommittee meeting, and so they could ask her some questions about it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Very good. Education, Human Services, Counsel Monticni.
Thank you. We had a meeting on the 21st, and there's a few items on the agenda tonight, about five. Thank you.
Very good. General Government, Counsel Steves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We met also on the 21st, and several of our items are on this agenda as well. And there were a few others that I spoke to Hannah at about the same time that couldn't get there because of posting reasons, so they were sent directly to this agenda. There was one item that we did briefly discuss, the appointment of Virginia Rapo to the Cultural Council that we put on hold because of legal requirements, because, to double check, because we believe that she's been on the, on that particular work for like 15 years, and the law says you can only be there for two terms. So we wanted to clarify whether that's true or not. And there is nothing else scheduled at the moment.
Very good.
Point of order. I'm having a hard time hearing tonight, so if they could kick up the speakers a little bit, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Very good. Planning and Development, Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. So Agenda Item Number Nine and Twenty Four on tonight's agenda, I'll discuss those when we get to them. We do not have a meeting planned. Thank you.
And Protection of Persons and Property, Counsel Dow.
Through the chair, we had a meeting on 6/21/23, and I have no report at this time, but we do have agenda items that we have recommendations on. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item Number Five, Chairman's Announcements. As this is the final regular meeting of the Town Council for the 2223 session, I want to take a moment to make some comments. We have two councilors whose terms are now ending. Jacqueline Jackie Ryan has served on the Town Council for three years. You've always known where Jackie stood on an issue. There's no denying that. She has not been afraid to call out what she felt something needed to be said. She's been passionate in her support for our citizens, especially for those looking for a voice. As Jackie enters a new path here in her life, she will continue to advocate for others, to be that voice that needs to be heard. Our world needs that. Jackie, I wish you well, and I know it won't be long before we hear from you again. George Gus Steves has served on the Town Council for nine years as a Town Councilor, and served as its Vice Chair for three of those years, I believe. Two of those years? Two years. He has been a member of numerous Subcommittee's and ad hoc Committees. He became ubiquitous with his presence at meetings. His quiet demeanor, however, belies a strong desire to do what is right for the town and to serve his fellow person. He has been the one who thinks outside the box, who forced us to consider what hadn't been considered. He has always been thoughtful, kind, and considerate, both personally and during discussion. He has been a gentleman through and through. Gus also has no plans to rest. He will continue serving on the Conservation Committee, and after a pause from Town Council, will decide on a further course of action. Gus, I look forward to your continued presence around Town Hall, and I also wish you well. I want to take a moment to say thank you to the citizens of Southbridge for their unwavering support during my two years as Council Chairperson and two prior years as Council Vice Chairperson. I learned that when the going gets tough, the citizens get right there with you and help to make things better. You have made my work rewarding and given me the impetus to continue to work for you. I want to thank the President and past councils for their support during my tenure as Vice Chair and Chair. While we didn't always agree, I know we were all working for the common good, and that made the work easier. If you will indulge me, I wish to personally thank former Chairperson Jack Jovan for his mentorship, as I assume the duties of Council Chair. His counsel advice and common sense were valued by me, and he taught me the true meaning of always having the best interest of the town at heart. Thank you, Jack. Last but certainly not least, I wish to thank Vice Chair David Adams for his assistance during our two years as Council Executives. I can't say enough about Dave. He is a rare breed, a person who says what they mean and backs it up, but in a kind and thoughtful manner. He is not afraid to tell it as he sees it, and that honesty has served the town and the Council well. He is also balanced and fair-minded, always willing to listen and modify his stance if the situation warrants. His energy seems to know no bounds. His devotion to family, town, and country are unparalleled. Thank you, David, for showing us all what the true meaning of leadership is. That's all I have. Item Number Six, Town Manager's Announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only thing I have is just a reminder that the bids for the animal shelter are actually due this Thursday, the 29th. We received the filed sub bids last week. They were reviewed and issued today to the general subcontractors.
That's it? All set? Okay, very good. Item Number Seven is Presentations. We have no presentation scheduled for this evening. Item Number Eight is Citizens Forum. Are there any citizens that wish to address the Council tonight on an item not on tonight's
Nicole Duffy, 657 Worcester Street, current Board of Chair. I'm here to ask why my reappointment was postponed at this, I'm sorry. I'm here to ask why my reappointment was postponed at this past EHS meeting without a reason given. I see that today, that all of the other reappointments that were discussed in that same meeting are being presented on tonight's agenda, all but mine.
I'd be happy to answer the question. I thought Citizens Forum was not a back and forth. That's what I've been told many, many times. But I'd be happy to answer if you want me to answer the question. I'd be happy to.
I don't think that we should be a Citizens Forum back and forth kind of situation. I think we can certainly discuss this after the meeting.
All right.
Yep. After the meeting.
Okay, I just want to make note that if this reappointment was discussed prior to the Subcommittee meeting, then when was this discussed? And who was present during this discussion? And I just want to make note that it appears that there is an abuse of power. Thank you.
Certainly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know we're not supposed to go back and forth on this, but during the EHS meeting or any other Subcommittee meeting, if you're going to say absolutely no to something and not discuss it and explain why to the individual that volunteered their time, I think that should have been brought up at the point of time instead of waiting and then having this happen and not discuss it again. You know, if you're going to say no, say no. That's okay. That's our right to say no. But you get up there and explain to that individual who's volunteering their time to say what happened. So thank you.
Very good. Counsel Dow.
I'm not understanding something. I had a hard time hearing the previous speaker. To my knowledge, he got postponed for further discussion. I don't know where the vote no comes in. That's all I'm saying. We're not at that point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Shania.
Counsel Dow, what was your question? I'm sorry. What was your question? I'm sorry.
The microphones are not really working well. So I'm not, I'm not hearing all of what you, with all due respect, I'm not hearing all of what you're saying. So what I, in listening to what Counsel Adams said, I'm totally out of the loop on whatever is going on. Thank you.
Okay. I'll ask it again. I'm here to ask why my reappointment was postponed at this last EHS meeting without a reason given. I see that today, that all of the other reappointments that were discussed in that same meeting are on tonight's agenda, all but mine.
Mr. Chairman.
And then I said that it appears that there is an abuse of power. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Monticni.
Thank you. Just to state for the record, at the EHS meeting, the other items are on the agenda because they moved forward. This one was made a motion by Counsel Marquetti, seconded by Citizen Member Ortiz, and it was postponed. I looked for discussion, and the previous speaker was in the crowd, and I did not see anybody looking to have any discussion at the time, which is appropriate time to ask a question like these. So no further discussion. We took a vote, and it was postponed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Shania.
Thank you, Chairman Daniels, and I want to thank you for your service as a Chairperson of the Council. I also want to thank the voters of Southbridge that came out and voted for me on this last election, and I hope, I hope I live up to their expectations as a Council in the next three years. On another matter, the Dudley Fire Department is going to have cuts and repercussions. With the cuts to the Dudley Fire Department, staffing will fall to two members per shift, and they will have a total of eight full-time firefighters. This means that a single ambulance can respond to an incident or a single fire truck. But the fire truck cannot safely fight the fire with only two members. Typically, if more personnel were needed due to a larger incident or multiple calls, per diem and callback personnel would be utilized. But with new cuts, these personnel will no longer exist. If one of the responders, out of the two, on duty for the shift, calls out sick or gets injured while there, there'll be no choose choice but to stand down. Emergency services, stand down for emergency services on the shift. One person cannot respond to a call safely, and a miniscule overtime budget is expected to be exhausted early onto fiscal year, leaving the department with no ability to bring in other full-time firefighters to work the extra shift. The town won't be completely stranded. Currently, Dudley participates in a multi-neutral aid agreement for fire and EMS coverage. If a surrounding town needs an apparatus or personnel for a major incident or an incident that they are unable to staff, Dudley responds mutual aid, and they can ask the same in return. With the new minimal staffing, Dudley will no longer be able to hold up to their side of the agreement, and the surrounding town can only be expected to provide help and never receive any in return. This will also include the Dudley Police Department. Dudley is planning to cut two full-time officers, all reserve officers and all part-time officers. They also plan to stand down at their department and sit there and wait for a call to happen and not patrol the street. Similar to the Fire Department, the Police Department utilizes mutual aid agreements with surrounding towns. There are already shifts where the staffing is not available for Dudley to support other towns in this agreement. With these cuts, they will really be able to support, resulting in other towns sending help but never receiving any until they decide it's no longer mutual beneficial. As an incoming Town Councilor, this matter concerns me, and it concerns me deeply. Is Southbridge going to supplement the town of Dudley because of the failure of the community to adequately fund their emergency public safety departments? Is this going to produce added cost to our community? Are we going to put additional risk to our emergency personnel? I believe that these issues need to be addressed by Council sooner than later. As a retired firefighter and an incoming Council, I think this is a very important issue that this Council and the next Council needs to look at on what the impact of Dudley's failure to provide necessary funding for their emergency personnel. It's not also, it's also including their DPW staff. They're in a dire straits, and I think for us as a community, we shouldn't be supplementing them, but we need to work together as a group to find out what will be the best for our community.
Hi. I'm here to address, supposedly I was told it was already voted on, and I know there was a committee.
Sir, sir. Would you identify yourself, please, for the record?
My name is Larry Carey, 148 Mill Street in Southbridge. This is an example, this picture, of a household, two, actually, two households' trash sitting out there. I have my household, one person, and I have one bag of trash. And from what I'm being told, I have to pay a fee the same as these people are going to have to pay. And these people won't have to pay it because it's going to be given to their landlords, and their landlords are just going to pass it off to housing, and the housing will pay for it. So the only thing this fee is going to address is hurting the, somebody like me with one bag, and I'm going to pay for everybody else, it's not me personally, but everybody that has a small household is going to pay for large households. Now, I was out this morning, I can't do much physically, but I was out this morning at 6:30 this morning, and I went around on Cross Street and Pine Street looking at the trash, and I sent Mr. Marquetti an email with several pictures in it. And I intend on going out on other days to, because I know, I am very familiar with the town. And you go down Mechanic Street on trash days, and it's outrageous. It's like this, only every dwelling, and you get, you get, this is two households. This is two households here. And let's be fair, let's be fair. If we have to pay, it should have been per bag. It shouldn't have been per household, because households aren't the same. A household can be me, a single person, and a household can be six, 10 people. And that is, that is definitely not the way to go. My suggestion, which I addressed with Mr. Marquetti, was per bag. You could sell the bags in the Town Hall, Big Bunny, all the grocery stores, Arbushons, all the local stores, per bag. And the landlords, they can buy the bags for the tenants, or they can have dumpsters. You know, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be per household, and we wouldn't be in this problem, okay, if we didn't give away our dump to begin with. Okay? And I won't go into that because that's all said and done. That's all passed. But what did the town do with all that money? I'd like to know what did the town do with, with the supposedly, what you would call them, the income that was supposed to be generated from all the marijuana shops in town? It's outrageous. You want, you want this town to develop and grow? People drive down, drive down Southbridge, and alls they see is marijuana shops everywhere. And what is the town benefiting from that? I was told it was supposed to bring in a large income. Where is it? Where is it? The other thing is the municipal fees that is going to be imposed on, on all the towns' people. You're not calling it taxes, okay, because we got Prop 2 and a half. You can only raise taxes up so much. You got a fire station that was voted in. I mean, we, I can't go over my budget at home, nor can any one of us, I don't think, can go over our budget at home. I can't spend more than I take in. I can't. And the town can't either. The town can't either, and it's, it's come to the, come to the line where you're hurting the regular folks in town. You're hurting all of us. We can't keep voting things in that we have no means to pay for. If the state's chipping in, that's one thing, but, but this garbage thing, you know, my idea with the municipal fee is that, that it's allotted in the budgets. The fire station, the police station, the Town Hall, the schools, it should be all allotted in the budgets. That's how it should be. And again, that means that the budget's going to go up, and it's going to be in the taxes, okay, but you can only raise taxes up so much. You got to stop killing the, the regular guy, the regular people, you know? It's come to the, to the fact that, you know, it's just too much on us. It really is. And I hope that, that some of you will agree with that. I don't know who the, the committee was. I wasn't able to get here due to health issues to talk with the committee, but it seems that, I mean, if they drove around town, they would have noticed, wait a second, some households have a lot more garbage than others. We have to do it by the bag.
Sir, would you like some more time?
No, I think I've, I've said what I came here to say, and I hope the Town Council would, would look at it and rethink this whole thing.
Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank, thank you very much.
Good evening. Kevin Buxton, 149 Everett Street. I'm going to keep it very brief. Still twilight outside. It's hotter than Hades in here, and once I'm done this, I'm leaving. I want to know, I want the Council to understand that from here on in, anything I say has no reference to sour grapes. I'd like to thank 68 people who voted for me. That's fine. And I want people to understand, I sat down with Matty the day after the election. I said, Matty, this isn't going to turn into a big federal case. From what I understand, it was all over the Facebook, all right? What happened to me was, it was all over the Facebook. And those of you who might not know, presently, I'm not on the internet. I don't have a network. I'm trying to live my life as a blind man off a smartphone. So I didn't realize all this rumor and innuendo about me dropping out was out there. But it's not sour grapes. It's ancient history. Let's move on. Truth to power is what I'm going to be addressing in future Council meetings. I have a hard time. I've, I've been cooperating with Committees for over 30 years, but I just have a hard time with the last Committee I was on, the Curbside Advisory. I guess another citizen also has some problems with it. My problem is, I watched the final meeting time and time again, but the vote we took at the final meeting, and then the Chairperson's presentation here with iron condom was something totally different. I, I had the opportunity that night to come up, and I was very calm and placid and said, well, my philosophy was not to change anything, but it doesn't matter. Then, lo and behold, when it comes back out of the Council, it went back to where it was from the original vote. Now, we can't go back to the Curbside Advisory ad hoc Committee because the Chairperson, as soon as he had his final meeting, then changed the results of that final meeting, presented it to the Council, the Council said, jeez, I don't think that's the way the meeting went. We're going to go back to the way the original meeting went. Needless to say, it's, it's a little confusing. There's a little truth to power that needs to be addressed in not only this matter, in others, as we can see. Like I said, I'm interested in getting out here. Toters. I am sickly, 63 years old, legally blind. I'm not going to look through the YouTube videos. If I could find somebody out there that would look through the YouTube videos, I'm pretty sure that I got an answer when I said the toters, both the trash and recycling toters are the town, correct?
Sir, just a second.
Make a motion to extend his time.
We have a motion in a second to extend his time. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes 7-1. Counsel Marquetti again.
So much for me keeping this short.
Please continue, Mr. Buxton.
Thank you. As far as the toters go, hey, how about we start with, stop defacing town property? Don't take a spray can and write your number on the side of the can. You want to write your number on it? You write it on the inside, you write it on the lid. Plain and simple, pretty common sense. Stop tagging your town property. Inventory on the toters. We also need to understand, we have recycle bank toters for recycling, we have zero sort toters, we have Casella logo toters. We have a new variety that's out there that has town logos on the side. It's a 96 gallon container, but it has logos. Recently, I was talking to the Health Department. I asked him, could I, could I get another recycling tote? He said, yes, if you pay for it. The questions I didn't ask him, who do I make the checkout to? And does the town make any commission when you're selling toters for Casella? I told you, I have other things I want to do tonight. Have a good night. You'll be seeing me next meeting.
Are there any other citizens that would like to address the Council tonight on an issue not on tonight's agenda? Very good. Let's move on. Agenda Item Number Nine, vote to approve the Town Manager's recommendation to reappoint Cassandra Ackley to the Planning Board for a three-year term effective July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2026, state ethics in good standing.
Go move.
Motion by Counsel Dow, second by Counsel Dow. Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Obviously, this was a 5-0 vote in favor of Sandy coming back up here to the Planning Board, and I just want to say thank you to her for all the years of experience and knowledge she's passed on to a lot of us. We're sitting up here at the dais, also on the Planning Board, and multiple business owners throughout the town, and I highly recommend we vote in favor of her doing another three-year stint. Thank you.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Opposed, unanimous of all present. Item number 10, vote to approve.
Could I, I'd like to make a motion to move up number, item number 53 to this point, considering we have people here who came, literally drove about 50 miles to get here to do this.
We have a motion by Counselor Steves to suspend the rules and to move agenda item 53 to now.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Motion by Counselor Steve, second by Counselor Lazo. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Seven to one. Counselor Marketti against. Very good. Agenda item 53 moves up to now. Agenda item 53 is a vote to approve a resolution in support of changing the state flag and seal of Massachusetts.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Steve, second by Counselor Rivas. Counselor Rivas, I believe this is yours.
So, um, so we have, um, a couple of our citizens who would like to speak to this and, uh...
Point of order. I cannot hear Counselor Rivas.
Oh, you can't hear?
Yeah.
Okay.
Get right next to it.
All right. Sorry about that. Um, so we have some citizens who are also members of the Nipmunk tribe who would like to speak and also Mr. Detmold, who has spoken before to this item.
Counselor Dow.
It is, it is weird. Yeah, it's hard to hear things.
Not us, the macros, it's not, something's going on with the speaker.
Point of clarification, these speakers that are under our seats are not on tonight. That's why we can't hear.
Hard to hear you too.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm just, if there's a way this can be corrected, I'm looking right at Counselor Rivas and I cannot hear her. I'm having a very hard time. I hope that we can hear our guests.
Can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
We'll try one more motion and then we'll, we may have to fix it. Please.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. My name is Liz Coldwind Santana Kaiser. I'm an elder and a councilwoman on the Chobonagaga Mag Band of Nipmunk Indians. And I'm also serving as the tribal historic preservation officer. I would like to start by saying, it gives me great pleasure to know that the lands we walk on today was once walked on many years ago by my ancestors. As we gather here today, we recognize our presence on the homeland of indigenous people. We honor this land and all of the indigenous peoples who were here at the time before and after the coming of the Europeans. And we recognize that we are temporarily on this land and must be mindful of our impact. Like our ancestors before us, we are the stewards of this land, and we have a responsibility to prevent further harm to the land and its people. We must take a moment to consider history of violence, displacement, migration, enslavement, settlement, pollution, and all of the atrocities that this land has witnessed. With this said, I would ask that we together continue to work to make changes to heal this land from these histories. One way to help in this effort is for the Southbridge Town Council to support the efforts to change the Massachusetts state flag and seal. And together, we would have taken steps to begin to heal. I want to thank you all for just considering hearing me talk. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any discussion on the part of the council? Counselor Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a lot of problems in Southbridge that we have to deal with every day, that I'm looking at every day. We have problems with our roads, we have problems with our sidewalks, we have problems with homelessness, drug abuse, violence in our streets. We have a lot of issues that we are dealing with constantly, and the last thing that I think that I want to deal with is the state flag. That is not really my, my main concern in Southbridge. I appreciate the speaker's concern about the state flag. Speaker should take a walk downtown Southbridge sometime and tell me what they think about that. And if we're going to start changing the state flag, are we going to start changing other things like the town seal, the Southbridge High School logo, the Hiker monument? There's a lot of things that you could look at in this town and you could find something about it that is offensive to someone. So I actually, I like the state flag, and so I'm going to vote against changing it. Thank you.
Very good. Counselor Rivas.
Thank you. Thank you to our speaker. I, I know that, you know, it's not always easy to come before a body and, and, and talk about history, especially a painful history. Especially a painful history. And I just want to say that Ms. Santana Kaiser is also a Southbridge resident. And I think in light of statewide, this is an effort that our former governor began to really look at what our indigenous brothers and sisters have been fighting for, for many, many years. And finally, our state, our governor, who was, you know, a Republican governor, acknowledged that this needed to be looked at, and there are over 60 cities and towns. This isn't something novel that just we're, you know, we're a rogue community trying to, um, you know, support this resolution. This is something that is happening statewide. There is a commission that has been put together with leaders from indigenous communities. And I think that Southbridge recognizing that our, our residents, people in our own community are being affected by this symbol, that it isn't just, you know, our, our pioneer, it isn't any of the other symbols. This is a symbol that has been fought against for many, many years, and it sends a message to our youth. It sends a message about violence that students are studying in school with an image that is basically trying to subjugate our indigenous communities all over again, a symbol that, you know, continues. I think that supporting something that is being supported statewide, it isn't that we're just, we, we just made this up. It's something that has been supported across the board by many different people that have been looking at this and are going to do this work in a thoughtful way so that we do have a symbol that is inclusive to everyone in our state, in our communities. Thank you.
Counselor Lazo, then Counselor Steves.
I thank Counselor Rivas. I respect your opinion, and I thank our guests for being here tonight. I don't want to get in a debate of it should be this, it should be that. I mean, I talked to a lot of people. Nobody has told me that I should vote yes, except the people that are at the meeting when I went to subcommittee. There's 300, over 360 some odd towns in, in the state. We're at about 75 or 76 that are in favor of it, which I respect them. And I always tell my fellow councils, vote your conscience. Whatever your conscience is, vote it. This is one of those issues where I, I am going to have to vote no. I'm a firm believer in that if we, if we forget our history, then we're destined to repeat the same mistakes of the past. So I was a big fan in middle school and wrote my midterm on Martin Luther King back in the 60s when he was alive. And, and when I went through the middle school, I kind of had like, I kind of idolized the guy because it was a nonviolent protest. Nobody is going to approve of the violence that takes place to protect our freedoms, to give us the life that we have today. I do not condone what Miles Standish did X amount of years ago, but the bottom line is, it is our history. You know, although it might be a dark side of our history, we will not forget, do not do that. So for myself, I know we're in a society of tearing down statues and trying to rewrite history. I'm sorry. You cannot rewrite the Civil War. You cannot rewrite the free, the freedom to the slaves. It is part of our fabric. Some of it we're not proud of. My father always said, he came from Albania, he had nothing to do with it. So as I sit here today, and I raised five children, and they went through the Southbridge schools and onto college, they, I talked with them and I said, you're a new generation. What do you think? And it was like a difference of opinion across the board. But what comes up is, that is who we are. We cannot change who we are. We can better ourselves, we can work on not being as violent as they were back in the day, but I watched the 1883 when they went to Montana. It was Bob Berwick. But I still, I'm going to be voting no. I'm in no debate with anybody on this. It's my conscience, it's what I believe in. And I continue to believe that we are Americans and we are all Americans, and we accept our good as long as, and as well as we accept our bad, but hopefully learned by both. Thank you.
Very good. Counselor Steves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'm supporting this ironically because some of what you were saying, I think, is exactly the oppo, is exactly what we're trying to do here today, is to recognize that there are other aspects of the history of our community and our state and our nation as a whole that have not been very well addressed in the term, in the way we look at history in this country. Um, I've done a lot of reading on Native American history over the years. I've got dozens of books in my, in my library about it. And one of the things that has always struck me is how, when you look through the traditional history that we get in our classrooms and even up into the most, for the most part, even up into the college level, it is very much, if you want to understand the, the native point of view, you have to go digging for it. It's there, but you have to go looking for it. And the, we do not, and I do not recall ever having any serious discussion when I was in high school, or quite frankly, even in college, because I had, I did a lot of the reading on my own, about what the native populations of our society went through and how they had to deal with a lot of the kinds of issues that really are symbolized by the flag that's standing behind us. And I would like to actually take a moment to, to read some of the specifics from this resolution that kind of address some of the issues of why... Is that clear?
Better.
Uh, so to somebody, address some of the issues in the resolution specifically about why this is being done in the first place. It's not about changing history. It's about expanding our understanding of history. Because there always has been these elements that we don't specifically discuss, and maybe it's time that we did. Um, and the resolution says this, I mean, it'll take, give me a moment if you can bear with me. Whereas the history of the state of Massachusetts is replete with instances of conflict between European colonists and the native nations of the region, who first extended the hand of friendship to the colonists on their shores in 1620 and helped them to survive starvation during the settlers' first winters on the land. Whereas members of the native nation for whom the state of Massachusetts is named were ambushed and killed by Miles Standish, first commander of the Plymouth Colony in April of 1623, barely two years after the pilgrims arrived on the shores. Whereas a colonial broadsword bandished, brandished above the head of the natives' man on the Massachusetts state flag and seal is modeled after Miles Standish's own broadsword, borrowed for that purpose from the Pilgrim Hall in Plymouth by the illustrator Edmund Garrett in 1884. Whereas the belt binding the natives' cloak on the flag and seal is modeled after a belt worn by Metacoma, known to the English as King Philip, who was among the Wampanoag leaders who resorted to a mutually destructive war in 1675 and 76 in defense of native lands against colonial encroachment. Whereas the proportions of the body of the native man on the flag and seal were modeled from a native skeleton kept in Winthrop, the bow modeled after a bow taken from a native man shot and killed by a colonist in Sudbury in 1665, and his facial features taken from a photograph of a Ojibwa chief from Great Falls, Montana, not even one of them's local, considered by the illustrator to be a fine specimen of an Indian, unquote, though not for Massachusetts. Whereas the history of the relations between Massachusetts since colonial times and the native nations who continue to live within its borders includes the forced interment of thousands of so-called praying Indians on Deer Island in Boston Harbor, where they died by the hundreds of exposure in 1675, their subsequent enslavement in Boston, Bermuda, and the Caribbean Islands, the offering of 40 pounds sterling as a bounty for the scalps of native men, women, and children in Massachusetts beginning in 1686, increase to 100 pounds sterling for the scalps of native adult males in 1722, half of that amount for the native women and children. Whereas Native Americans were legally prohibited from even stepping foot in Boston from 1675 to 2005, when that law was finally repealed. Whereas the 400th anniversary of the landing of colonists at the Plymouth plantation near 2020 afforded every citizen of the Commonwealth a chance to reflect upon this history and come to an awareness of the possibility of a better relationship between descendants of colonial immigrants and Native Americans, or Native nations of the Commonwealth. Whereas Native Americans have long suffered the many abuses of racism, the appropriation of their symbols for public schools and sports teams, the loss of their ancestral lands, and the encroachment of cultural lifeways. Whereas the town now known as Southbridge, which shares a rich native history with modern tribal nations such as the Nipmunk and the Mohegan, who have lived in this area for thousands of years before the first colonial settlers, settlers arrived in 1730. Now therefore be it resolved that the town of Southbridge hereby adopts this resolution in support of the work of the Special Commission on the Official Seal and Motto of the Commonwealth, established by a resolve of the General Court in 2021 and appointed by the governor to recommend changes to the current flag and seal of Massachusetts in support of a new flag and seal for the Commonwealth that may better reflect our aspirations for harmonious and respectful relations between all people who now call Massachusetts home. The town clerk shall forward a copy of this resolution to Senator Ryan Batman and Rep. Peter Durant with the request that they support the work of the aforementioned Special Commission and advocate for a new seal and motto for the Commonwealth. And I think that a lot of the items in there, while many of us who come from a European heritage may kind of gloss over them, I can easily picture how, if we were in circumstances where some of the native people would see, look at them and see them, I could see them being offensive. You know, I mean, I know personally, my family traces back to my flower, but I also have native blood in, from one woman that we can trace back to 1820 or so. And so I'm not claiming to be a Native American, but I think that it is a situation where this is a way of recognizing and honoring, quite frankly, part of all of us, rather than continuing to walk a path that is exclusive of many. Thank you.
Counselor Dow, then Counselor Rivas.
Thank you, Chair, through you. I don't know why we taking away their history and their sign. I'm going to say something. Some people might like it, some people not. I born in Lebanon, but when I become American citizen, I swear to protect that country on my life. Enough is enough. I understand the American flag, if you don't have a light on it, or it was ripped, you got to find. Now you see flag everywhere with different colors, fire department they want to put their on, police department want to put their on, different organization they want to put color on it, and now we're going to change the, the flag of, of the state. Shame on us. Shame on us. We need to protect this country. Let's, let's stop the chemical weapon. Let's stop the war, not stop the flag. This is the, the country, this is what we need to protect, not changing. Let's look outside what's going on. How we're going to protect the country? What are we coming to? You guys fighting on the flag, history? Protect the American flag. Nobody touch it. Nobody change color on it. Thank you.
Counselor Rivas.
Symbols have messages. And while we can't change history, we can choose to change the messages... And while we can't change history, we can choose to change the messages that we send to our citizens about who we are honoring and who are, who we're trying to continue to oppress with these messages. And if this was a symbol that was derogatory towards our Italian residents or towards our Irish residents, we wouldn't even be having this conversation in this way, that would be eliminated immediately. It is a symbol that sends a message, it's not about erasing history, our kids need to learn history one hundred percent, but you can't change and have a different outcome and learn from history if we keep uplifting images that send a message about oppressing some people and not others.
Counsel Lazo.
I don't know what message you think we're sending, but you are out of touch. Um, when Counsel Dow, I salute you. You're born in Lebanon, and you stand up for America, and the stars and stripes and all of it, you got me, you got me excited. But if it was an Italian, or if it was some other ethnicity, I still would feel the same way. You don't get rid of your history, your history is your best teacher. Do not, uh, forget where we were, where we are, that's what predicts where we're going. We're in a society right now that the changes in just the language on who you can call what, can't call him she, you gotta call him this, I'm totally confused. I know I'm a dinosaur, and I know I'm an older fella, but I gotta tell you, this hot, this, this society's upside down. Let's just destroy everything we stood for, and let's rewrite it, all wonderful, so we can feel good. I'm all done with the feel-good, let's do the right thing, like Mark Hetti says, fix the sidewalks, the roads, the schools, there are real issues at this time. How much is it gonna cost to change the flag, they say, it's gonna cost us anything. I turned around and I said, do you know where the state insignia, insignia is? It's on everything. And the thing is, there is a cost, everybody says there is no cost, and then the taxpayer gets hit again. I really think this is a low priority, if we prioritize, but I still cannot change my history of my state and of my country. I'm an American first. Thank you.
I'd like to speak to all of you, and anyone that is disagreement from another country which you all are from. This is America, you're right, and my people have gone through hell. I have grandchildren and great-grandchildren who is making a change in this world, who are becoming doctors and lawyers, that's what my family's doing, who are indigenous people. Do I want my grandchildren seeing this flag as they come and grow up like I did? No. You talk about your history, your history is a lie, it has taught lies from the time you all, not you, but your ancestors reached this land, you have taught lies, you have lied about the indigenous people, how we try to save our country, mister over there, our country, not yours, ours. So for you to sit there and say that is ridiculous, that you, that we're trying to change history, history has been taught a lie, and has been lying for years, and it's time that we start telling the truth, and that's what I have been doing, and I'm gonna continue to do. I am seventy-three years old, before I leave this earth, all of this racism and hatred toward native people, I hope to see gone. So say what you wanna say, but you know, in your heart, you're racist, you know it, talk about what? You're from where?
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, somebody gets to a podium and starts calling me a racist, can you rule that out of order, please? I don't think there's any rule for the reverse racism.
You know what?
This is playing a game for...
That'll be it, ma'am, thank you, thank you, Counselor.
You rely on...
We'll move on.
Thank you.
We'll move on. We will move on. Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I appreciate all the Counselors' points of view up here and, uh, even, even, uh, what's that?
I can't tell you.
Oh, okay, good to go. Um, the questions I have here is, I did my own homework, right? I went and I took this piece of paper and I went in there and I didn't go onto the sites that, you know, or Wikipedia, uh, to find out some of the answers, because we know that's kind of being skewed on either way. But I did my homework on it, I'm history major, I've taught history at college level, high school level, and at the middle school level, and one thing we did teach every time, from the Marine Corps all the way through, uh, middle school, we taught about Trail of Tears, we've talked about the, uh, the treatment of individuals as they came over here from, regardless of the color of their skin, if they're white or black, or whatever you wanna say it. Um, it is very interesting to, to understand history and how brutal history is, because I can go back to my ancestors too as well. The thing is, that flag belongs in a museum, and that's the great thing about our country, because that, we have museums that nobody's trying to tear down, destroy, which I got to see firsthand in many places. We are allowed to actually, here, as Americans, take a look at our history, the good, the bad, the ugly, the things that we need to do right, that we've been doing wrong, and the, um, things where we can keep the same, where we can agree upon. This is the great thing about it, a lot of passion up here as well, a good word to use, because I think that it, it focuses on, on the true, true meaning of democracy and our ability to speak and the freedom of speech. So, that flag belongs in a museum, period, to be taught on history. It should be taught in the history books of how it went, how these flags from one, two, three. I seen the South, I understand the South, in many ways the South is still fighting those issues from eighteen sixty, eighteen sixty-five, there, or even prior to that. Um, I've seen those flags changed over time. I, the one thing I wish would happen is that we would have a flag to be able to be, to look at, um, and I hope your committee, I believe it's in Boston, correct, comes up with something for our state that could be, signify who we are as Massachusetts residents. Um, but at this point in time, you know, I'm gonna vote in favor of this, I, I'm not calling anybody a racist up here, because I think they have all their opinions, a lot of passion, a lot of anger, whatever you wanna damn call it, I don't really care. But that thing needs to go, we need to find a better way of doing it, and then we can go, I could give you all a history lesson, a lot of things up here, it's gonna be ugly, regardless of what you think, so I appreciate your time, I'll be voting yes on it, and I ask, unless Counsel Montigny wanna say, I'm gonna make a motion to move the question.
Second.
We have a, a motion to move the question in a second. Uh, there is, uh, no debate on that, we need a two-thirds vote.
Mr. Chairman, just a, a point of order, I don't think it's, I don't think it's allowed to make a motion to move the question once you just finish speaking.
I think that you can, once you're recognized and have the floor, you can make a motion to move the question, that's my understanding of the rules. That's the way the chair rules.
I'm sorry, who seconded that?
So there's no debate on the motion, it takes a two-thirds vote to move the question, all those in favor. Opposed? There's two-thirds of a vote, the motion is moved. Very good, we have a motion on the floor. To approve a resolution in support of changing the state flag and seal of Massachusetts. All those in favor will vote yea, those against will vote nay, by roll call.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
No.
Counselor Lazo?
No.
Counselor Marketti?
No.
Counselor Montigny?
No.
Counselor Rivas?
Yes.
Counselor Steve?
Yes.
The motion fails on a tie vote, four to four. Five-minute recess. I call this meeting back to order, it is now eight oh nine PM. Item number ten, vote to approve the town manager's recommendation to reappoint Caitlin Jewell as parking enforcement officer for a one-year term effective July one, twenty twenty-three through June thirty, twenty twenty-four, state ethics in good standing.
No move.
Motion by Counsel Lazo, second by Counselor Steves, Counsel Lazo.
Uh, the recommendation from subcommittee was unanimous, for confirmation.
Any discussion?
I just have a quick question.
Counsel Steve.
How come her, this appointment is always just for one year and her, um, ACO appointment is for three?
State law.
All right, so, I think you're right. Yep, Counsel Lazo.
Oh, he wants, I'll let the chief handle it, it stay long.
Good evening, if I could, through you, Mr. Chair, we had discussed this, last year we talked about the animal control officer being moved to a three-year appointment.
Right.
Which we can do, the inspector of animals, we cannot do, that's, that has to be every year, where I have to designate somebody, give it to the town manager, and then we have to modify the state.
No, just the parking enforcement officer.
The parking enforcement, I believe, can be done every three years. The inspector is every year.
Yeah, I know.
Right.
We're on agenda item number...
Ten.
Ten, we're talking about the parking clerk.
Parking enforcement.
So, my, again, my understanding is the po, we could, we could modify the parking clerk to be every three years.
Parking clerk or parking enforcement officer?
Parking enforcement officer. But the issue is, it was just, there was some confusion, I also spoke with the chairman over the weekend, we cannot budge on the animal inspector.
I get that.
But the actual Caitlin's job and her role in our community as the animal control officer, we can modify, which has been done on an addendum last year, and we can also do, as far as I know, parking enforcement can be moved, because I don't think our charter, and I could be wrong if Counsel Lazo has other info, uh, I don't believe our charter or the bylaws indicates that we have to do a parking every year.
I don't think they do.
So we could modify that, my opinion.
Mr. Chair. Are you saying we could amend that to a three-year term?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I, I believe we could amend the three-year term for the parking and the animal control officer, yes, but not the inspector, I know it's confusing, but the inspector is the one that's every year, and that is state law, and you've heard me say that several times, so that might be some of the confusion.
Right, right.
Counsel Montigny.
Thank you, um, so there's animal control officer, animal inspector, parking enforcement, two of them can be made three years, one of them has to stay every other year, got it. So since the animal control officer from last year expires June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, for the sake of bookkeeping and housekeeping, I would like to make an amendment.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. Can we state agenda item number ten?
Sure.
Well, you're, you're jumping over it, you gotta amend, I'll make an amendment to number ten to make it a three-year term.
Second.
Do I still have the floor, uh, Chairman Daniel?
Yes, you do, Counsel.
Thank you, I was gonna make an amendment for two years to match up with the animal control officer appointment from last year, I want them both to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, so that they're not staggered, and I would like, I was going to make an amendment for two years, not three, because then they'd be staggered and...
Second.
Well, there's another one ahead of mine now.
All right, Counsel Montigny had the floor, he's made a motion to amend item number ten to read through June thirty, twenty twenty-five. There's a second by Counsel Dow. Any discussion on the amendment? Counselor Adams.
Just making sure that it's legal to do it, everybody gives me a thumbs up, I'm good to go, I'll vote yes, to move this thing along, everybody's, I feel like it's, uh, not sure.
And through you, Mr. Chair, I, I don't believe, I've read, I've reviewed the charter and also the bylaws, and I don't see anything as far as the parking enforcement, is that what you would term it?
Yeah.
I don't believe, I believe we can do it for as long a term as we want. The inspector is the only one that's a little complicated.
Any further discussion? Okay, on the amendment to change June thirty, twenty twenty-four to June thirty, twenty twenty-five in item number ten, all those in favor. Opposed? Unanimous of all present. We now have an amended item, reading vote to approve the town manager's recommendation to reappoint Caitlin Jewell as parking enforcement officer for a one, for a two-year term effective July one, twenty twenty-three through June thirty, twenty twenty-five, state ethics in good standing. We have a motion in a second on that originally, any further discussion? All those in favor. Opposed? Unanimous of all present.
Thank you.
Item number eleven, vote to confirm the town manager's reappointment of Caitlin Jewell as animal control officer for a three-year term effective July one, twenty twenty-three through June thirty, twenty twenty-six, state ethics in good standing.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Lazo, second by Counselor, um, Adams, Counsel Lazo.
I'd like to make a motion to postpone indefinitely.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to postpone indefinitely. Counsel Marketti.
Um, no, that's fine, I don't have any questions, thank you.
Anyone else? Counsel, um, Chief.
No. Sir, I would just recommend that we at least speak to why it's being, why it's being postponed, it's because last year it was done as an addendum to extend her for a three-year term, which I was not aware of, it was brought to my attention by a counsel that it's in the minutes, the initial process went through as a one-year, then it was switched to a three-year, so it's not like we're not renewing her, it's because it's already been done last year, it doesn't need to be done this year.
It's already been done.
Exactly.
Okay. Counsel Marketti.
Uh, thank you, through you, that's what I was going to say, was that it was amendment, amended last year to run through twenty twenty-five, so...
Yes.
There's really no reason to do it again this year.
Correct.
Any further discussion? All those in favor. Opposed? Unanimous of all present.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Item number twelve, vote to approve the town manager's re, recommendation to reappoint Nim Lam, Lam to the parking ticket clerk for a one-year term effective July one, twenty twenty-three through June thirty, twenty twenty-four, state ethics in good standing.
So move.
Motion by Counsel Lazo, second by Counsel Steves, Counsel Lazo.
Recommendation was unanimous, for confirmation.
Discussion. All those in favor. Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number thirteen, vote to approve the town manager's recommendation to reappoint James Dyer to the Jacob Edwards Library Board of Trustees for a three-year term effective July one, twenty twenty-three through June thirty, twenty twenty-six, state ethics in good standing.
So move.
Motion by Counsel Lazo, second by Counsel Steves, Counsel Montigny.
Thank you, this was recommended favorably at council, uh, subcommittee.
Discussion. All those in favor. Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number fourteen, vote to approve the town manager's recommendation to reappoint Margaret Morrissey as the ex-official member of the Jacob Edwards Library Board of Trustees for a three-year term effective July one, twenty twenty-three through June thirty, twenty twenty-six, state ethics in good standing.
So move.
Motion by Counsel Lazo, second by Counsel Steves, Counsel Montigny.
This was also recommended at subcommittee.
Discussion. All those in favor. Opposed?
Sorry, I was in favor.
Unanimous of all present. Eight oh. Item number fifteen, vote to approve the town manager's recommendation to reappoint Keith Roberts as Veterans Graves Officer for a one-year term effective July one, twenty twenty-three through June thirty, twenty twenty-four, state ethics in good standing.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Lazo, second by Counsel Steves, Counsel Montigny.
Uh, this was also recommended, and I'd like to offer an amendment for the same fashion as the last one we just made, I believe Keith is the officer until twenty twenty-five, so in order to match up for bookkeeping, I believe that we are able to also extend this to a two-year term, so that they end on the same day, uh, so I would like to make an amendment to have this through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
I second the amendment.
We have a motion by Counsel Montigny, a second by Counsel Lazo, to amend the, the motion to read till June thirty, twenty twenty-five for a two-year term. Any discussion? All those in favor. Opposed? Unanimous of all present, we now have an amended motion on the floor, any discussion on the amended motion? All those in favor. Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Very good. Item number sixteen, vote to approve the town manager's recommendation to reappoint Denise Clements to the Cable Advisory Board for a three-year term effective July one, twenty twenty-three through June thirty, twenty twenty-six, state ethics in good standing.
So move.
Motion by Counsel Lazo, second by Counsel Steves, Counsel Steves.
Uh, we recommended it unanimously, and Denise was not there at the meeting, so...
Any discussion? All those in favor. Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number seventeen, vote to approve the town manager's recommendation to reappoint Kevin Cristo to the Board of Registrar for a three-year term effective July one, twenty twenty-three through June thirty, twenty twenty-six, state ethics in good standing.
So move.
Motion by Counsel Lazo, second by Counsel Steves, Counsel Steves.
Uh, we recommended that unanimously too.
Any discussion? All those in favor. Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number eighteen, vote to approve the town manager's recommendation to reappoint Michael Daniels to the Liquor Licensing Board for a three-year term effective July one, twenty twenty-three through June thirty, twenty twenty-six, state ethics in good standing.
So move.
Motion by Counsel Lazo, second by Counsel Montigny, Counsel Steves.
Uh, we recommended that unanimously too.
Very good, just by, uh, reason for disclosure, Michael Daniels is not related to me. There's no connections. Uh, Counsel Lazo.
I would, I would just like to thank, um, Mr. Daniels, I mean, he's been a longstanding liquor board agent, it's not like he's only had a few years on there, and, uh, just thank him for his, uh, service.
Very good. Any further discussion?
I'm gonna abstain.
You're gonna abstain? Very good. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstain. We have six in favor, one against, Counsel Rivas, one abstain, Counselor, uh, Dow. Motion passes. We have six in favor, one against, Counsel Rivas, one abstain, Counsel, uh, Dow. Motion passes. Item number 19. Vote to approve the town manager's recommendation to reappoint Melissa Hilli to the Local Historical District Study Committee for a three-year term effective July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2026. State ethics in good standing.
So move.
Motion by Council Lazo, second by Counsel Steves. Counsel Steves.
Uh, we recommended that unanimously too.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Item number 20. Vote to approve the town manager's recommendation to reappoint Virginia Rapo to the Council on Aging for a three-year term effective July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2026. State ethics in good standing.
Second.
Motion by Council Lazo, second by Counsel Steves. Counsel Steves.
Uh, we recommended that unanimously, and since it's not specifically on the agenda, I just wanted to bring up the fact that, um, Virginia's appointment to council, uh, to the Cultural Council. Um, did, did, did that get a chance to go through your office there, Charlie?
It can't. It, it, according to the regulations that Matty showed us, it, uh, it's not possible to reappoint her at this point.
So, okay.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Item number 21. Vote to approve the town manager's recommendation to reappoint Paul Tetro to the Airport Commission for a three-year term effective July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2026. State ethics in good standing.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Council Lazo, second by Counsel Dow. Counsel Steves.
We recommended that unanimously too.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Item number 22. Vote to ratify the contract with the YMCA of Central Massachusetts for the exclusive use of the Petrol Pool on Tuesdays from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. from July 11, 2023 through August 8, 2023.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Council Lazo, second by Counsel Dow. Counsel Montigny.
This was recommended favorably at subcommittee.
Any discussion? Counsel Mark Hattie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. Counsel Steves made a pretty good point at the subcommittee level. Um, why are we charging Recreation Department $750 to a fee on a pool that we own? So, and I thought it was a pretty good point that he made. So I'm thinking maybe we should, I would, I would like to amend, make a amendment to waive the fee.
Second.
We have a motion to waive the fee by Counsel Mark Hattie, a second by, uh, Counsel Dow.
I said it.
You did. Counsel Steves. Okay. We're not gonna fight over that. Um, any discussion on the amendment? Counsel Steves.
I mean, I threw you to Charlie. Um, so I was wondering if you had, if you have any clarification on this issue? Because I know when, when Michael was talking at subcommittee, he was saying that it was basically a rollover from previous years of fees that, um, that they charged for, I'm drawing a blank on, uh, what, I don't think it was specifically for this pool, but it was for other uses. And, um, I never, it personally, it never makes sense to me when the town is, is paying for town to use town pool or services. That's never made any sense to me.
Yeah. Actually, this is the first I've heard of this. I really have no idea. I can start looking into it.
If that's the case, maybe we should postpone it then. Oh, there's, there's Michael there, coincidentally. Hey, Mike. Your item about the Petro Pool.
Hello?
Hi. Um, if you could clarify, we're having the discussion about the Petro Pool item.
Yes.
Um, number 22. And I just wanted to clarify, um, we just, Mike and I just made, just made a motion to, to waive the fee and, to waive the fee because of the idea that it didn't make a whole lot of sense to us, as I mentioned at the, at the subcommittee meeting, that the town would be paying to use a town service. That doesn't make any sense to us.
It is managed by the YMCA.
Yeah, but it's our, it's, but it's our pool. So what is, what is, what exactly does this fee do? If you can explain, what, what is it, we, what, what is it we're actually paying the fee for?
To manage, to maintenance, to have lifeguards on duty.
Okay, how long have we been doing this?
This pro- the swimming?
Yeah.
Uh, this would be my second year.
This is the second year, because I don't...
Cops and Kids has a very similar, like, once a week thing.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I don't, I don't recall ever voting on this particular contract before.
I'm sorry.
I don't recall voting on this particular, this particular issue before. Like last year, I don't think we did.
I think it might have been a last-minute thing for myself. I apologize.
Okay, so. I don't quite know what, what we do about this one, to be honest with you.
Counsel Lazo, then Counsel Mark Hattie.
Yeah, I'm, uh, I have a hard time with a couple of the mics. I did hear you. Um, if we're paying them $750 to manage the pool and they do the cleaning and do everything, my question is, what fees are we waiving? I, I...
I think, I think the intention was to waive the $750. That we, that we'd be opening it up to recreational, that the Recreation Department would be using it as our pool without the fee. Um, but I, do we actually have a contract for them to? Did we ever vote a contract for them to manage the pool? I don't recall doing that either. Because last, last I recall about talking about the Petro Pool, the state DCR managed it. And that was five years ago or something like that. I mean, I remember the discussion we had years ago about DCR upgrading the pool and then managing it for a while. And I don't recall ever voting on it, on YMCA ever managing it. I don't have a problem with them managing it, but I don't recall ever doing it.
Mr. Chair.
Counsel Mike, Mike Montigny.
Thank you. Um, I think I can get to this. Uh, so do we, through you to Mr. Brunel, do we pay them on a yearly basis to manage it, or did, when we turned over the rights, that there's just something they're doing? Because as far as I understand, this $750 is specifically for Tuesdays from 9:00 to 12:00. It's like, it's like, forget that we're the Town of Southbridge. If some other entity came in and they wanted to from 9:00 to 12:00 use it, they'd have to pay the YMCA $750 to use it from 9:00 to 12:00 on that specific day because they manage it. Now, thank you for nodding your head yes. So my, my question is, do we pay like a total fee when we handed it over to them three years ago? It's like, okay, we're gonna give you $5,000 a year to do this, not the 9:00 to 12:00, just the managing of the whole pool? Or do we pay them at all to do that, or no?
Again, was, I'm, I'm sorry, but, excuse my ignorance, was the pool handed over three years ago?
Oh, I thought you said three. Whatever.
As far as I've known, it's, you can go on a town website, you can go on a state website, you can Google state pools, it will come up.
Gotcha.
As far as managing it, I have keys to it. I do nothing to staff it. I do nothing to maintenance it. That's all their work.
No, that's great. Maybe, maybe six or seven years ago, we did ourselves. We had a pool director and stuff like that. So my question to you then is, every year, do we pay the YMCA to be the person that manages this whole thing all summer long, or are they just doing it?
It does not come out of my budget. I have not reviewed the agreement that we have.
So we, we don't pay the YMCA to manage it, but they do management. And we are coming from 9:00 to 12:00 specifically to book through them, because they manage it, and we, and they, and we don't pay them for that, but they manage it, and we're just trying to book that $750 slot. So we're talking about waiving the fees. It sounds like if we don't pay the $750, the YMCA is gonna say, well, you, you're supposed to be paying us for lifeguards and water cleaning and all this other stuff, so you can't use it 9:00 to 12:00 if you don't pay us. The $750 isn't going into the general budget or anything of the town. It's going to the YMCA.
Yes.
Who we don't pay at all outside of this.
Not that I know of.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Counsel Mark Hattie. Counsel Mark Hattie.
I'll, I'll give the Counsel Dow.
I'm sorry. Counsel Dow.
Thank you, Chair. Through you. Where they come, the money come from? Is it grant or the town have to pay?
I charge families $20 a week to bring their child. So at most per...
Where the $750 coming from? The town or you have a grant?
So it's gonna be, uh, $3,000, uh, now I'm blanking on the total number, but it's gonna cover 70% is the fees that I'm charging the parents. The other 30% will come from my program services in my line item, and it's my summer program, so that's exactly what that money's used for.
But that money, where the money come from? Like, is it grant from the state or the town have to come up with that money?
It's gonna come from, 30% of it's my budget. The 70% is directly the money that the parents are paying me to bring their kids to the pool.
Okay. I think the, the, the money we're paying for the staff, they're gonna, they're gonna monitor the kids, if they're gonna, to be safe. I don't think, you know, they're making money from the town. I, I think it's a great program for the kids' summertime, uh, to keep them off the street and get them out of the house. Uh, I, I'm gonna support that tonight. I mean, $750 to put a couple of, uh, you know, person there, make sure everybody's safe there and clean and keep, uh, the pool clean. I think I'm gonna support it tonight. Thank you.
All right. If the council will indulge me, I'd like a motion to postpone this so the town manager can investigate this.
Second.
We have a motion postponed by Counsel Lazo, second by Counsel Steves to postpone to the next meeting, which is June 10th.
July.
Hold on, Mr. Chairman, is that what Shane is here for?
Chief has something to add.
Well, yeah, certainly not to belabor this, but the history behind this is very complex, and I was involved in it. And I wanted to give, before we voted on anything, I wanted to give a little bit of the history. So when I first took over as chief in 2016, we were paying an enormous amount of money to Town of Southbridge to a private company out of Boston, Dorchester to be exact. They sent the crew here. None of them were qualified lifeguards. They were using narcotics when they were supposed to be watching kids. They sat in those chairs and put all of our kids, including our cops and kids, in grave danger because there was no one there that could save them if they were drowning. Luckily, Town of Southbridge did their, their homework. We did our job. We got rid of these people. The YMCA was kind enough to take this over. And I gotta say, they are an enormous asset to this community.
Oh, they are.
I would absolutely not recommend moving this into my own selfish interest. The Cops and Kids program, I'm gonna have over 100 kids there next week, like, every day. So I don't wanna do anything with the YMCA that could jeopardize them being open, functioning. I would say that, and again, I, I urge you to reconsider. It's $750. That's a pretty cheap, uh, cost to have our kids in this community able to swim there every day. So I just, I'm asking you to reconsider that. I just wanted you to hear a little bit of the history because some aren't familiar with it. So thank you.
Before we all... Mr. Chairman, quick, you have a motion on table to amend it. You already got a first and a second.
The motion's to postpone at the moment.
I'll withdraw my motion.
To postpone?
Oh, that's the motion postpone, right?
I'll withdraw the motion.
I'll, I'll withdraw the second then.
All right. So it's...
Thank you.
You're drawing it. Very good.
I just wanted you to know the history, that's all. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Chief.
I'll withdraw my second to, uh, to the amendment too.
Thank you. Okay. Counselor Adams.
Please forgive me if I ask the questions. It's already been answered. $750, right, that were required to fork up? That being said, where is that money gonna come from? It's $750, no big deal, we'll figure it out, but what account are we paying this through? Please, again, I apologize if I did not mention the first.
You're, you're all good. I charge families $20 a week per child with that money. I'm gonna spend about, it's gonna be 70% of that. I'm putting all the costs of that towards the pool. That'll cover 70% of it. The other 30 is my line item, program services, my summer recreation program. I'm gonna pay for those services.
So should we amend the motion to reflect that in here, how it's being paid? Or do we not? Okay.
Well, it's ultimately coming through the town. They're paying Recreation Department, so it's coming through the town out of the red.
Okay, very well. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor, Counsel Rivas.
I agree with Counsel Dow, um, and I do know the history as well. Um, the Y has invested a great deal into the pool. If you were a, a kid like me who learned how to swim at the state pool, the condition that it was in before they took over, um, it was in really rough condition, and they, they really invested a lot of money into the pool to create this opportunity for our students. And $750 that our residents are contributing to so that their students can have access, or their young people can have access. Um, I do think that we should be voting yes for this, and I will support it.
Mr. Chair.
Counsel Montigny.
Thank you so much. Um, I think it's plain and simple now that the postponement and the amendment are off the table. I think maybe the amendment might have been made thinking we were paying ourselves, but we're not. We're paying the Y. Now we know how it's run. We could sit here and say, $750 sounds a little high, but you know what? Like, we can't cancel this program like Counsel Dow said, and you're offsetting it with money like the previous speaker said. I mean, I think this is something that we should all be able to support now that we understand it better. And thank you, Mr. Brunel, for coming in at the right time to take care of that for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
For timing. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present.
Keeping me on my toes.
Item number 23. Vote to approve award of 129 Worcester Street abatement and demolition to Costello Dismantling Company, Incorporated, and authorize the town manager to sign the contract and any and all related documents.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Dow, second by Counsel Steves. Uh, Counsel, uh, Counselor Chief, you'll look.
Good evening. Thank you. Uh, so on June 7th, we opened the sealed bids. There were four bidders. Uh, there ended up being only three qualified bidders. Uh, this bid, uh, was, um, $394,000 for this project to move forward. There was a question because the bidder did not, uh, acknowledge addendum number three. Uh, addendum number three was brought before the Attorney General's Office and determined to be not substantive, uh, where it did not change the scope of the work, where, uh, the, uh, this contractor acknowledged the fact that it would not change their price or their bid. So it was determined to be acceptable, uh, to accept this, um, contractor. Uh, the contractor in question, Costello Dismantling, uh, they have a DCAM score. DCAM stands for Division of Capital Assessment Management and Monitoring. And, uh, 80 is a fa- anything under 80 is failing. Anything above 95 is very good. This contractor has a score of 96. There were four, uh, references contacted, all with positive, uh, uh, experiences with Costello Dismantling. And, uh, we're looking forward to moving forward with the project. This is for 129 Worcester Street. The, uh, property located there only. The other two properties are not included in this demolition project.
Counsel Mark Hattie.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. Uh, reading through the packet, I see that this demolition is going to cost, uh, $394,000 to take down the night Chevrolet. I think that that total amount should be in the agenda item, and I would make that a friendly amendment, that that be included in the agenda. I'd also like to point out that, uh, in the original proposal, the demolition of four structures was $220,000, and now it's 490, uh, 394,000 for just one structure. And from what I understand, that the contingencies have all been eaten up at this point. So I'd like to remind the councils that we did vote for 25.7 million on this fire station. And so I think that if that's what we voted on, that that's what I'm counting on your committee to keep the cost at 25.7 million. Thank you.
How much is the amount that you're talking about?
Uh, the total of cost is $394,000.
Three nine four, comma, zero zero zero?
Yep.
Is there a second to that? Thank you. Second by Counsel Steves. Uh, we have a, uh, a motion to amend the agenda item to include the cost of $394,000. Any discussion on the amendment? All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have to still, we still gotta vote. We still gotta vote on the regular one. Okay, any further discussion on the original item? Counsel Mark Hattie.
Just one more thing I'd like to point out. It's reading through this contract, I see that the construction company, Costello, there's a lot of use of subcontractors, which always annoys me when I hire somebody to do a work at my house and they use subcontractors. So I'm, I'm thinking at that kinda cost, I wanna see Costello Construction Company onsite doing the work and not some subcontractor. Sometimes I think, well, they're, they're charging 400,000 and they're paying somebody 100,000 to do the work, so that's all. Thank you.
If I, if I could, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly.
Uh, under these circumstances, uh, the subcontractors would be for things of hazardous materials natures, things that their, their company themselves are not certified to do.
Counsel Steves.
I'm thinking, Mr. Chairman, um, Joe, can, so do you have a timeframe for this project, and are there concerns about hazardous materials there?
Uh, the, uh, all the dr- the core drillings that were done, there were, uh, no concerns found. There are, there are the same things that most older buildings have. There is some asbestos in the building. And there is a, uh, oil separation trap that will have to be mitigated, but it's, it's expected under these circumstances. it's, it's expected under these circumstances. So there's nothing off the charts that they were not expecting to see.
Okay. And timeframe?
The timeframe, they are ready to mobilize as soon as the contract is in effect. I have two of the utility contractors that still have not removed services from the site, but we're hoping that they will be set up and ready to go in July.
Okay. Thank you.
There being no further discussion, all those in favor. Opposed, unanimous of all present.
Thank you again.
Item number 24. Vote to approve the waiver of all permit fees for the construction of the Bridge of Faith Youth Center at 45 Childen.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Lazlo, second by Counsel Dow. Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. This is unanimously voted on in favor of getting up here to the town council. Just wanted to let you know, everybody has it in their packet. They have letters of recommendations from our building inspector, both chiefs, the Chief of Police and Chief of the Fire Department, Dr. Valar, and a few others in favor of waiving these permits. After taking a look at it and their estimate, they're looking at about $30,000 worth of permit fees. But at that point in time, it's a lot lower than the original thought it would be. One question that was brought up during the PND meeting was from Counsel Marketti about the progress. I went down personally today. Thank you to Esteban and his crew for waiting on me to get over there. I took some pictures of the place. It's gutted out. It's amazing what you see with the, the vertical beams in there. Go from the base floor straight up to the second floor. There's no cutoff. So it's pretty amazing, some of the things that we got to see in there. Show me where the hallway is gonna be, where the ADA compliance will be as far as into the doorway. Also, I believe you have the elevator shaft that's, that you're putting up there. So things are moving along actually quite quickly. I did talk to, is it the architect? I believe it is. He made it very clear that they're still working on some final designs in there with the construction, but all in all, there's a lot of work happening in that building. Pretty amazing.
Discussion. Counsel Steves, then Counsel Rivas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question, actually. I guess it's through you to the manager, or, I don't know, is Mike Julian here? I don't see him. I don't know. Somebody, hopefully somebody can answer this question. My concern is, what is the town's policy when it comes to waiving fees for projects? I mean, it makes sense if we're doing it for a project that the town is building. But, and I, I don't know if we have a policy regarding, specifically regarding nonprofit projects versus for-profit projects, you know. So, can somebody answer that? Do we have a policy there? I'm not aware of one, not aware of having ever voted one.
Counsel Lazlo.
Do we have a practice of doing this in the past?
There is no policy waiving of the fees. The council can waive the fees. I know I was an adamant counselor against waiving the fees for the American Optical, the first building, and it passed and they waived the fees, and it's for, that's for profit.
Right.
And that's why I battled against it. I would never vote to waive any fees for anything except our own buildings in a nonprofit. I'm voting in favor of this waiving of the fees. I think this cause is something that the town, nonprofit, we're gonna be working all together for the kids of Southbridge. So for me, I'm, I'm voting to waive the fees here. And I'd like to compliment Esteban on his open door policy while the contract construction is going on. Thank you, Esteban.
Counsel Rivas.
So I have a question to the town manager or anyone else about the wording all permits in relation to the Crisis Pregnancy Center that plans to open a clinic inside the Bridge of Faith Youth Center. Last Saturday, they had an open house, and myself and a few people approached their tent and asked them questions. And they absolutely plan on opening a clinic. And they said that they would need to go before the zoning board to, because it isn't zoned for a health clinic. I have a lot of concerns about this supposed clinic. On mass.gov, if you go to Crisis Pregnancy Centers, it says they may appear to be reproductive healthcare clinics, but do not provide contraception or other reproductive care to, to people going into this supposed clinic. I asked the people there whether they, again, when a youth or young person goes in to get a pregnancy test, whether they refer them for STD testing, they do not. Whether they refer them to an OB-GYN, they do not. And unless specifically asked, they do not refer them for abortion care or any other care. In my previous employment, I worked for UINC, and I was the program coordinator for adolescent health. When I did trainings in, in these types of centers, they give misinformation about condoms. And I just think, we didn't hear about a, a health center being housed in the youth center. The only information we had when the Bridge of Faith came before us before was that they were a sponsor, but they clearly intend, and like I said, I spoke to the people at their open house, they clearly intend to open a clinic inside the youth center. I think it is, that is not a place for this type of, of a, a center that isn't a healthcare center. And I'm concerned about the language, all permits, being waived when they need to go before the zoning board to talk about housing a healthcare clinic or a health center per se in their youth center. Thank you.
Very good.
If I may speak to that direct comment, because as someone that is working this project, number one, they are not a sponsor, they're a partner. Number two, they will not have a health clinic onsite. They will have office space available to them, just like Our Bright Future, just like Fellowship of Christian Athletes, just like also UINC to provide the Fathers Program, because that is a tremendous need in our community. We are partnering with different organizations to have office space available. We are not in contract with anyone to hold a healthcare clinic. They have resources that will be available during their presentations. I am not one to come up here and say, we're doing this, and back up and say, we're doing that. There is no contract, Counsel Rivas. There is no healthcare clinic going to be operated out of the youth center. They will have office space, just like other organizations. So in the language, in speaking with the Planning and Development Subcommittee, speaking with the chairman of the Subcommittee, the language of all permanent fees, we're talking about construction permit fees that have to do with this construction project. This has nothing to do for waiving fees for programming. I'm not coming up here for programming. Again, this is nothing to that point. Your life or your options medical, they have different types of programming. Same with Our Bright Future, he has different type of programming. Also, Fellowship of Christian Athletes have different programming, other partners that we will have. Again, we, they will have an office space that they will have.
Let me go to Counsel Adams, then Counsel Rivas. Counsel Adams.
I'm going for it.
Counsel Rivas.
So you may want to speak to your partners, because they assured us that they are gonna bring an ultra, ultrasound machine, that they are gonna have a registered nurse onsite. They fully expressed to us that they plan on opening a clinic in your, in your youth center. So if you are not aware of that...
We would definitely have conversations, but if, part of their programming, they have a RV, one thing I do know is they do have an RV bus that has a registered nurse that you mentioned that provide free ultrasound testing for individuals. If that's part of their program, and if somebody comes into the program and says, hey, can I get a ultrasound? Sure. If somebody comes to the program and says, hey, I need this, we'll refer them somewhere else. That's their programming. In regards to running a health clinic inside our building, that's not happening. In regards to...
That isn't what they said.
Which is fine, but I'm, again, I stand here as, as the representative of the Bridge of Faith Youth Center. I do not speak for your options medical. I do not speak for anybody. It's like me telling quasi at, your Our Bright Futures, you can't bring this robot in. You know? So it's different programming. Again, that's theirs. But we are not, again, there will not be a health clinic inside the Bridge of Faith Youth Center.
Okay. Counsel Dow, then Counsel Lazlo.
Thank you, Chair, through you. I believe you have a blueprint, specific what you're gonna have done in that building, correct?
There's offices, offices and classrooms. There's no...
There's no language saying you're gonna have a, whatever.
A health clinic? No. There will not be a table with a, a medical, what do you call it? A medical bed or any, no, there will not be.
And all, all your blueprint is approved already, correct?
Correct.
So the only thing you're asking for the construction?
Correct.
To be waived, all permit for construction. Can we amend that and say all construction permit to be waived, or?
It says it.
Okay. So I feel that they're, just...
It says all. All permit fees for the construction.
Thank you.
Counsel Lazlo, then Counsel Rivas.
I think what we have to look at is the agenda item. And I know I'm conversing with my fellow colleague to my left. What we're doing is, it's construction fees that we're gonna be waiving. That's the construction of the building. That's the brick and mortar and, and to meet the building code, plumbing, electrical.
Suppressing pump.
That type of stuff. So I think we're looking at construction fees. Now, if there's any clinical fees or creation of clinics, that's above and beyond later on that, you know, can be debated.
Or licensing.
Right now, I think it's, we're talking about construction fees to construct this building, which covers a building permit with sewer, water.
Fire.
Framing, fire code, to bring the building up to code so it's safe. So I, I don't see where the debate comes in. I thought the use of the building was for the youth, and I didn't hear all of what one of the counselors was talking about. Maybe I missed it. Thank you.
Counsel Rivas.
I think there's misinformation between yourself and your partners. They literally pointed to the blueprints and showed us where the clinic would be. So there seems to be miscommunication.
Again, Counsel Rivas, not to interrupt you, but at no point, I brought the blueprint, and I believe you guys have the blueprint, at, at no point, any, and again, I want to be very specific and very clear. The blueprints say office, or multipurpose rooms, or conference rooms, or kitchen, or conference room, or audio visual, audio or video studio. We, there is no clinic. It's not happening.
Counsel Montigny, then Counsel Rivas.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to give a kudos to former Chairman Carrasco, because the transparency here tonight is great, and every step of the way throughout the process, I feel very good about what I'm getting into. I know that, when I was a child, attending the first youth center, it was one of those staples in my childhood from grade six to eight that helped me build confidence in myself and meet other kids in the community. So while we go back to the conversation of building permits and other inspections permits, I'm definitely gonna be supporting this, especially the fact that it's nonprofit. I don't want to get in the future, someone says, hey, past precedent, you have to do this to everybody that came up, because you don't own the youth center and you gave it to the youth center. It's a case-by-case basis. In the future, I'm not gonna be entertaining that line of questioning. So tonight, I commend you for job well done, and I will totally be supporting this, because our children desperately need the things that you are trying to offer to them. Thank you.
Counsel Rivas.
Well, I don't disagree with you that that was not what was presented. Imagine my surprise when I went onsite and, and found a, an open house for a clinic that you never presented to us. So I agree with you, that was not presented here. But what I encountered when I went to the open house was completely the opposite of what you're telling us here today.
They, they will have office space. Please, please let her finish.
Finished. And I am concerned about waiving fees for a project that I'm not sure what the intent is at this point, because I was shocked to go onsite and, and find this. So I don't particularly agree with Counsel Steves that we shouldn't be setting a precedent, or it should be a policy that we change. And I am also concerned about the lack of transparency. I completely think it's the opposite of what Counselor Montigny said. So I will not be supporting this tonight.
Any further discussion? All those in favor. Opposed, six in favor, two against. Counsel Steves and Rivas against. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 25. Vote to accept the Community Compact Best Practice for a curbside collection analysis for $35,000 and to authorize the town manager to sign any related paperwork.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Steve, second by Counsel Dow. Counsel Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe this was Counsel Adams Subcommittee, PND, but I would like to speak to it.
This, I don't believe went up to PND. I thought it went up to, if I could speak on it, please. I thought it was. All right. Well, it's been so long since I've been...
I'd be happy to speak about it.
Yeah, I think there's two of us that are knowledgeable about the whole situation. This is the money that you requested for the, through a grant to help to, to figure out, give us a data analysis on the cost of, of the new curbside and to help us figure out a way of the billing process, the cost of, to the residents, break down all the numbers for us, so we can move forward with the, the flat fee process, the utility bill in a sense, to, to the residents of Southbridge.
So I, I would like to speak to this. So this was decided, actually, we decided this back in March at the ad hoc curbside collection committee. And what it was, was a cost benefit analysis of what the impacts of creating an enterprise fund for curbside collection would be. And then at the May 17th, 2023, Planning and Development Subcommittee discussed review whether to recommend town council accept the Community Compact Best Practice for Curbside Collection Analysis for $35,000. And at that meeting, it was amended to say, Curbside Collection Enterprise Fund. We're not, we're not analyzing curbside collection. We're analyzing the creation of an enterprise fund for curbside collection. So that was amended at the May 17th, 2023 Planning and Development Subcommittee meeting. And then it was supposed to go on the June 12th, but I think because it was a, a full meeting, it got moved to this tonight. So that's, I would just like to make a friendly amendment to change it to Curbside Collection Enterprise Fund. So I'm just adding the words, enterprise fund.
You wish to amend this and not this item by adding the words?
So after the word, vote to accept Community Compact Best Practice for a curbside collection enterprise fund analysis for $35,000. We're not analyzing curbside, we're analyzing enterprise fund. Yeah.
Second? Did you second?
We have a motion in a second to amend the motion to include the words, to insert the words enterprise fund after the word collection. Any discussion on the amendment?
I'm sorry, who seconded that?
My clarification is, I just clarification is, what exactly did the state send us back as far as the curbside compact wording for what they said? Because we kind of, we're accepting a grant from them at this point, whatever it is they said. And quite frankly, my packet doesn't, for some reason, I, I got the agenda here, but I don't have the rest of my packet in my email, so I don't know what happened to it.
I can't, I cannot hear, I'm sorry, Counsel. I can't hear you.
What I said is, I simply asked, what did the state actually say? This is supposed to be used for in terms of curbside compact and Community Compact Best Practices grant, because we are accepting a grant that they're giving us. So it depends on what their, what their grant said.
They're going to analyze an enterprise fund. That's what they're gonna do. They're gonna send us a consultant to analyze the costs of an enterprise fund. Can't just start an enterprise fund without knowing how much it's gonna cost the residents. It would be like a water and sewer enterprise fund. You have to know what the costs are related to it.
Counsel Montigny.
Thank you very much. I think that Counsel Marketti is just trying to add some specificity so we can have clarification on what... so we can have clarification on what the item is actually about. I don't think it actually changes what's going on. I think it's just making it very clear, and I think it's an appropriate amendment. I don't think it's gonna mess up any grant, what I know. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. So the amended item reads, "vote to accept the Community Compact Best Practice for a curbside collection enterprise fund analysis for $35,000 and to authorize the town manager to sign any related paperwork." It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 26, "vote to accept the Community Compact Best Practice for a municipal fiber feasibility study for $50,000 and to authorize the town manager to sign any related paperwork." Motion by Counselor Steve, second by Counselor Lozlo. I believe Victor would speak to this.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So this was a grant from the state that would allow us to do a feasibility study on what options we have out there to connect to fiber. To connect to fiber and connect our town buildings to fiber and have one unified network. And the library has a request in for a build, but they also, that would, this would help them as well with that research and figuring out where they can connect to and how they're gonna connect to it. At least get us started.
Very good. Counselor Steve's.
I remember having this discussion at ARPA, among other things. And so I definitely am in favor of this. One question I have is, will this, will this study enable us to maybe kind of get to see where the community as a whole would be able to tap into this system and maybe use it as a kind of a core for a system, a town-wide system of one form or another? I know it's just for our town buildings at this point. I get that, but-
My focus right now is municipal buildings.
Right, I get that.
And hopefully, once we know the information for that, we can build off of that later.
That's what I'm hoping, yeah. That would be good. Thanks.
Anyone else? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 27, "vote to approve the water department's request to designate S- surplus 2 Allen Bradley PLC-5s programmable logic modules as they have been in storage since an upgrade project in 2012." Items to be auctioned at a later date.
Some move.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was a DPW.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Counselor Dowd, second by Counselor Montigny, Counselor Marketti, go ahead.
And this was approved three to zero at DPW. Thank you.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 28, "vote to approve the installation of speed bumps on Teresa Ave."
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was approved-
There's no more, thank you. I have a motion. Is there a second? Motion by Counselor Steve, second by Counselor Adams, Counselor Marketti.
Thank you. This was approved three to zero at the DPW Subcommittee. Thank you.
We're getting tired. Chief.
If I could quickly, Mr. Chair, and I'll steal a little bit of Counselor Montigny's words earlier. Speed bumps, speed humps, any type of speed control device in our community is on a case-by-case basis. I've gotten 50 calls probably since someone saw this agenda, or certain people have seen this agenda, about how they want speed bumps on every street in Southbridge. I am not a fan of speed bumps. They don't work. There's a lot of issues. I could bore you all night with the specifics. Subcommittee heard my conversations, or my opinions on speed bumps. With that said, I'm also adult enough to change my opinion, and when I meet with people in the community, I have no problem talking to our residents, and when they bring concerns to me, and I believe they're justified, it's my job to bring them forward to the council. The DPW director and I have come to that, and we've both formed that opinion. The difference with Teresa Ave is, it's 62 and over community. The people in that community are out there every single day on the streets and the sidewalks. The sightlines are terrible, the roads configured poorly, these turns, it needs, there needs to be speed bumps in that area. Again, a few years ago, I may have argued that point a little bit more, but I guess I'm, you know, getting older and wiser, and I do believe that we should put speed bumps on Teresa Ave. Not speaking for the DPW director, I dragged him up here with me tonight just to kind of speak to what our intention is moving forward, and with that, I'll-
So at the Subcommittee meeting, we had discussed having a formalized plan for what we wanted to do with this before bringing it upstairs here. In recent conversations, we've decided to maybe alternate that program a little bit. We've discovered that we're in, we all, yeah, possession, that's sort of, yeah. We're in possession of some temporary speed bumps, I believe that used to be utilized by the school system at some point somewhere. So the discussion that the chief and I have had was that we were gonna put those in place on Teresa Ave and see how they worked, see what the reaction was, see if it calmed the traffic at all before going and doing a permanent. So at this point in time, it wouldn't cost us more than our labor to install them, and then we could see what the outcome was from there and decide if we had to expand upon that or not.
Counselor Adams.
To the chief and the director. First of all, I appreciate it, especially for that area. I just wondered, do you have enough on 169 every five feet all the way from the Connecticut border down to Main Street? It'd be awesome. But I, no, I'm just kidding. I don't need a response, chief, thanks.
And Mr. Chair, just quickly again, because I left out, so just to maybe leap some of the questions, maybe lessen them. This is gonna be posted to our social media page. It's gonna be posted to the town's social media page. We're gonna have town council meetings. I'd appreciate if we continue to mention this. And we're gonna send out a reverse E911 in that area, target specific to alert residents, it's coming. I spoke with the fire, with the fire chief. We're gonna have the variable messages on all of our signboards in the community, probably got three. And we're gonna strategically place them on Teresa Ave, warning motorists, hey, heads up, there's speed bumps now and they're new. And we plan on doing that for a month or so after they're installed, just to make people aware and make sure that they know so they don't go driving up there at 50 miles an hour, hit a speed bump and cause an accident. So that's what our intention is moving forward. Be open to any other suggestions or comments.
Counselor Montigny.
Thank you. I appreciate that this is a case-by-case basis because I don't think it would work everywhere. My main concern is, I'm sure yours might be, is the presence of emergency vehicles being, and trash pickup potentially. So, you know, I'm sure you guys are gonna place it in a way where that's okay. I mean, I've lived in a place before where there are speed bumps on every street, and it does get kind of tedious, but I think in this community, it's, it would be a huge help because my grandmother does live there. I see people fly down there all the time. Maybe at the beginning in the exit, it would make a lot of sense, as long as, you know, the police, fire and DPW can still do their job and trash when they need to go there. I think it's a great thing, and thank you. I believe it was Counselor Shenier who put in a lot of work trying to get this forward. So, thank you, everybody.
Counselor Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was just going to say the same thing. Thank you to Mr. Shenier for bringing this to our attention and getting the residents up there organized, come to the traffic commission and talk about this issue. So, thank you very much.
Counselor Lozlo.
Yeah, I'd like to thank one of the senior citizens in that area, Counselor Shenier, to be one of the first guys to brought this up because he had a, quite a group of ladies from the elderly center up there where they kind of got on them and the word travels, and then the chief gets the calls, and the DPW's gonna get the calls, and this was just a good community move right from the grassroots of the development itself. I think it's a great job, and I like the approach of, look, see, let's try and see how it works before we do something permanent. Thank you very much.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 29, "vote to approve the installation of a four-way stop sign at the intersection of Pleasant, River and Walcott Streets." Motion by Counselor Lozlo, second by Counselor Dowd, Counselor Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This one up was approved three to zero at the DPW Subcommittee.
Any discussion? Chief.
Certainly, I'll just say it again on the record, again, not to beat this thing, but a case-by-case basis, I've gotten several calls about now we need four-way stop signs at every intersection in the community. Pleasant, Walcott and River is a very unique situation. It needs to be done, and I, we were gonna do the same exact thing as far as social media, new configuration in the road, signboards, things of that nature. E911 calling that neighborhood, just to alert people that, hey, this is a four-way intersection, it's a stop now. Because that's gonna be probably more problematic, making people aware than the speed bumps. That's a dangerous intersection, needs to be corrected.
Very good. Counselor Steve's.
Thank you. I completely agree with that. It's a huge issue. One of the things that if we can look at, and it's not directly related to this, but can we look at eliminating some of that fence, that curb side fence there when you're going, when you're turning? It's actually on Pleasant Street, right, basically it's right in front of the garage there. Because it really needs to be cut back, because you can't see anything on it when you're coming off of River Street onto Pleasant Street. You can't see anything. That's a, it's a visual hazard, but it has nothing to do with this particular issue.
Counselor Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, and I also realize that that's a very dangerous intersection. I've noticed it myself when traveling over there. And I'm just hoping that when we work on the River Crane project, that that project can be extended to that intersection so that it can be widened and make it safer. Thank you.
Anyone else? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 30, "vote to approve adding signage in the area of 64 Oliver Street for a child with autism." Motion by Counselor Dowd, second by Counselor Steve's, Counselor Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was approved at the Subcommittee, three to zero.
Any discussion? Counselor Steve's.
I have a problem with the issue. I just want to, quick question. How effective are these kinds of specialty signs? We see them in various spaces, and the issue I think is, they often sit there for 25 years and you completely forget what they referred to originally.
And if I, through you, Mr. Chair, the science is questionable about how effective slow children at play, autism, or deaf or blind child signs are, but I can't argue with the family. I don't, they're coming forward, they're asking. So I told them, I bring it up to the elected officials and take a vote on it. So I support it, but again, the science is mixed on how effective they are. Yes, you're correct.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Item number 31, "vote to approve the fire department's request to apply for the Joseph B. De Bernandro Foundation Grant in the amount of $11,990 for the purchase of person escape systems to be added to personal protected equipment."
Second.
Motion by Counselor Lozlo, second by Counselor Dowd, Counselor Lozlo.
The vote was unanimous at Subcommittee to approve.
Chief, would you like to address this?
Yes, again, thank you. Over my career, we've had a very simple personal escape system. It's basically a rope and whatever the firefighters wish to put together themselves. I was approached by members of the department that wanted to have the same equipment available to all firefighters in a more robust package that's gonna make it safer for them. They did the footwork for it, specifically firefighter Ryan Morton was the one who did most of the background with the grant and finding the grant. We looked at, obviously, different ways to acquire this equipment without putting the cost all to the taxpayer, and this was a way to do that. So we're looking to apply for this grant, which would purchase about 22 of these units, and then we would purchase the other 15 units for, through funds that we've acquired through donations as well as our safety equipment fund.
Very good. Counselor Lozlo.
I'd just like to thank firefighter Morton, and I commend you and the chief as far as your men coming up with things, always being on the initiative for Southbridge, and good job. Thank you.
Counselor Adams.
Just a quick amendment to this to add, and have the town manager sign all related documents.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to add the words and have the town manager sign all related documents. Any discussion on the amendment? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present for the amendment. Any further discussion on the agenda item as amended? Sue, did you get the amendment?
I did, yes.
Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present.
Thank you again.
Thank you, Chief. Item number 32, "discuss review a health department transfer request for $800 from account number 001132-578100, Town Council Reserve, to account number 001512-530000, Special Services, to cover the expenses for emergency tick control in Henry Street Field." Motion by Counselor Lozlo, second by Counselor Dowd, Counselor Montigny.
This was voted in favor.
Okay, any discussion? Counselor Lozlo first.
I would just like to thank the Health Department. On, a complaint came from Counselor Shenier, and then we called it in as far as what would be the proper procedure in an infestation of ticks in a ball field. Our health director got on a day game, we called the manager's office, the chairman. It was just a shiny moment on how citizen to government to performance works. It was the old, as we call it, the good old boy era where we're phone call away from solving a problem. Thank you.
Counselor Montigny.
Thank you. I stalled there for a second because as I'm looking at this, I think maybe Counselor Marketti had his hand up first, but this is something that should be under DPW as it is, they maintain the grounds. I know in the end here, we had to kind of try to find the money, but as I'm sitting here looking, I thought it was a DPW one, but you're right, we heard it at EHS, but next year, I think this has to be, or even this year, it should really be taken out DPW.
To that point, Mr. Chairman, the reason why he goes to the Health Department is because it was a public health issue, was the infestation. As far as the spraying, our health director went to DPW, and they did not have the ability to spray, which created the ability to go to the manager and to go to the chairman and to get the funding for it. And then it expanded even further because the health director said the infestation is in some of the other fields, that it should be done annually, so I think it created a health problem, that's why it ended up there.
Counselor Montigny.
Just to continue, but the money is not coming out of the Health Department or DPW, it's coming out of Town Council Reserve. So this is where my head's at, but I totally agree with what everybody's saying, and I fully support it. And thank you to Counselor Shenier for helping get this done so the kids could return to our field that we spent over, I think, a million dollars in grant money helping prepare. Thank you.
Counselor Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, I did get a lot of calls on this, and I understand the need. I absolutely agree, this is an emergency, and I am going to support it. The only question that I was raising the other night was that this should be coming out of their specialized service account and not Council Reserve. And it was mentioned that DPW at what time was doing this, and they're not doing it anymore. And I would suggest going forward that the funds come from that DPW specialized service account because they do have the same amount that the Health Department, about $40,000 in that account. So rather than taking it from reserves, take it from the DPW specialized service. Thank you.
Very good. Anyone else? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 33, "vote to approve a change order for a time extension for the West Street Infrastructure Improvement Project."
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Marketti, second by Counselor Adams, Counselor Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was approved at the DPW Subcommittee by a two to one vote. The question that some of the members had was that they don't seem to see any work being done on West Street, and they were questioning why they would need a time delay in the work if they're not doing any work. And I don't know if the DPW director is still here and if he wants to address that, but that is the question that was raised at DPW. Thank you.
Mr. Director.
So there actually has been work that's been continuing on West Street. They're currently shut down until, I believe, July 13th, when they're coming back to start the reclamation process for the road. They were completing tie-ins and removal of excess equipment in the intersection of South Street and West Street up until, I believe, mid, end of last week. So at the moment, the work is shut down until they come back to reclaim. That was pushed off for obvious reasons with school and such, but the explanation that I got from tie-in bond and from the contractor was prior to this phase of the progress, of the project, there was delays due to pipe availability in the past. So this is a no-cost change- change order, it's just a time change to complete the work. So the estimated time now is to, I believe, have the project wrapped up before school goes back.
Any further discussion? Counsel Dow.
Thank you, Chair, through you. I'm not sure if you were aware of one house between West Street and South Street, it was sewn, pipe broken, and they just covered it, and then the residents was having issue, and it was left for several weeks, I don't know.
I was made aware of that this morning. There was some ongoing conversation last week about an issue in the area, which we had the Sewer Department out there, I believe, three days in a row, doing investigative work, trying to figure out what the problem was. There was a miss site by the contractor that was removing the equipment up there. Apparently, they thought that it was an abandoned service, and unfortunately, it turned out to be that it was not abandoned, that it was actually somebody's sewer service. So we'll be dealing with that throughout the rest of this week to figure out how that happened.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Item number 34, vote to appropriate $1,119,000 from free cash for the following: Capital Stabilization Fund, $500,000; Fiscal Year 24 MS4 Program, $150,000; Health Insurance Account Deficit, $119,000; Animal Shelter Additional Funds, $350,000. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Adams, second by Counsel Steves. Mr. Manager.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. You have in your packet a summary of the use of the free cash for 2023. You can see the money we appropriated on May 22nd. On June 12th, we had those four additional items that were appropriated. And then I took a look at what we needed to do with the rest of free cash, and these are really my recommendations. The first one, the Capital Stabilization Fund, since we'd used the $500,000 out of that, since we had enough free cash in here, still leaving a surplus, I just recommend using the $500,000 for that. Earlier this month, or actually, last month, we had a meeting on it this month, we did receive a copy of a report and had a meeting with Tag and Vaughn regarding the work they've done on the MS4 program, which the town had been quite behind on in the past. And we met maybe two weeks ago about this and discussed this, and they provided kind of a detailed breakdown for what the actual cost is over the next five years. And, you know, based on the numbers that are in here, it was my recommendation to use 150,000 of the free cash to fund that MS4 program. The next item has to do with the health insurance deficit. Now, you're probably aware that we've been keeping an eye on this because of the change that we had in the health insurance budget last year, where we increased our contribution from 60 to 70 percent. Did you want me to go through them all, or?
No, no.
Okay. All right. So, you know, Christine Russell, our town accountant, has brought to my attention that she was concerned about a deficit in that fund. So a while back, what I did is I went through, and I believe there's a summary in here, but just to kind of summarize, what I did was I went through and took one of the MIA bills that we have on a monthly basis and annualized it. So basically, the gross billing that goes out to MIA that we get billed for, for all of our health insurance, is roughly $6.7 million. When you look at each of the different categories we have, municipal active, municipal retired, school active, school retired, and the difference ratio between 70 percent for the active employees and 50 percent for retirees, that brings the number down to about 4.3 million. That is actually the town's net share for that health insurance through MIA. We also have some retirees that take a plan from Fallon, and that added another 17,000 annually to the cost that we should see for FY '23. The FY '23 budget that was put forward last year was 4.3 million for the health insurance. That included $3,600 in life insurance, which left over $4,296,000 for this health insurance. So based on that, we projected a deficit of about $35,000, $36,000, $35,600. And Christine kept looking at this and look into the fact that the deficit we're facing is still greater than that. And she has determined that the reason for that is that we have not, in all cases, collected the proper amount from employees. We've had employees that have been out of the system but remained in there. So we actually were paying the premiums in the past and not getting any employee contribution for that. So she is working, she's here to discuss it if you have any other questions, but she is working on making sure we audit all that and make sure we get corrections on that. We filed some requests for, you know, corrections on that recently, they're totaling $57,000. But as far as what we need from here on to the end of the year, she's calculated that we do need approximately 118 and some small change. So that's why, in the original packet you get out, I had requested 50,000 for that deficit. But right now, it looks like we do need the 119,000 in order to make sure that we have the money to cover the final bill that we'll have for this fiscal year. And then the last item, and I know Chief Woodson is here to discuss this, is that, as I mentioned, we do have the bids coming in on Thursday for the animal control shelter. I was told, you know, before I had the impression that we had roughly 400 or so thousand, you know, set aside for this. And so my original request was to this 350,000 to make sure that we had sufficient money. We think that the price is probably going to come in, I think originally, the estimate was put out at maybe 600,000 for this project, but we've seen several other projects come in much higher. One of the filed sub bids came in quite a bit higher. And so I had requested the 350 for that, but I would recommend, based on the numbers that the chief gave me, for what we really have in that account, including, I think, an appropriation from ARPA, that we only appropriate 250 for that. So that would mean that the sheet that I showed you has 625,052, and if we only went with the 250 for the animal shelter funds, it would leave 725,000 in the free cash. So I'd be happy to discuss any one of those items. Again, this is the recommendation. You certainly can put less in, but I just wanted you to be aware of what my thoughts were on that.
Okay, Counsel Marquetti first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I have to say that, you know, former Counselor Edmund McCann will be rolling over in his grave tonight if he saw the free cash being raided here this evening. When we did our capital planning committee, we tried to be very conservative on our spending, to reserve our free cash. According to the state, a good, healthy amount of free cash under sound financial policies, community strives to generate free cash, and the amount equals about 3 to 5 percent of its annual budget. And, correct me if I'm wrong, but after tonight, we'll be down to less than 1 percent of our general funds. I don't see the rush for this. I would prefer that we refer this back to general government, so that they can fully vet this. This has not gone before any Subcommittee. It came right straight up here to this council. When we approved the capital planning this year, the town manager was very happy with our approach. He thought it was good to reserve the free cash for helping us to balance the budget, help offset the taxes, and now it seems to me he's going on a spending spree. As far as the insurance money goes, I don't know. You sent us something tonight, about 4.4 million, 300,000, but the document we voted on this year was 4,760,000. That's what we voted on. We did not vote on 4,300,000. As far as the stormwater goes, according to the tie-in bond document, that's really not even due until next June. So that gives us plenty of time to vet this fully at general government. As far as I'm concerned, the stormwater is an unfunded mandate, and we should be talking to our state reps to find out why we're not getting funding for stormwater. And as far as the shelter goes, we put a lot of money towards the shelter already, 200,000 in ARPA money for engineering, planning, and permitting. During our capital budget season, during the budget season, I asked the police chief how much he had in there. He said he had 400,000, he wasn't requesting anymore, and he didn't see any reason to request anymore. So I would like to make a motion to refer this back to general government, so that they can fully vet this. I don't, I don't think it needs to be rushed. Capital stabilization account is not going anywhere.
Second.
We have a motion by Counsel Marquetti, a second by Counsel Dow, to refer this back to general government.
Thank you.
Counselor Steves is next.
My question was actually about the item itself, not about the referral. Can I continue?
All right. Yeah, go ahead.
Because Counsel Marquetti is right there, we haven't discussed this yet. And one, I mean, I understand that, like, for example, specifically, I was going to ask about the MS4 program, if you can give me some more details of what you actually expect this money to do.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you're saying.
I was curious if you could give me some more details on what you expect the MS4 money to actually do, because we've very vaguely talked about MS4 and the needs for stormwater issues off and on for probably the last four years at this point. And our stormwater project has really never gone anywhere. We're not even sure how it's been funded at this point. There's been some talk, we passed bylaws about it maybe two years ago, and that's it. So can you explain a little bit more?
I can, actually.
What exactly are we doing? Because unfortunately, my email did not get the actual text of the packet, so I don't have tie-in bond report in front of me.
Well, in this plan, year six is FY 2024, and...
Because we never did years one to five, other than passing the bylaws.
Well, no, you're right. In other words, that's why we paid money this year to get up to date on this thing.
Yeah.
I mean, they really do require you to meet these standards, and we have paid Tag and Vaughn to get us up to the level that we need to be, and we're really not at that level yet. We still are behind on this. And so there's quite a bit of detail here. Some of this has to do with public outreach and education, good housekeeping, nitrogen source identification report. So the first item in here is $20,000 for the highest priority project identified in the best management retrofit inventory nutrient source identification report constructed by the DPW in year eight, Plan Year Eight. The actual budget will be refined based on the selected site and permit requirements. This requirement was referred to in years six and seven to be spread across multiple years, but the first year of that would be $20,000 next year. This, I believe, is identifying areas and actually doing field work, and our DPW here, director is here, I hope to provide more information on this. But basically, that particular item has 20,000 in there for next year, 40,000 the next year after that, and then it drops down for a total of 67,000 through year 10, which is 2028. Let's see. I mean, the whole plan is pretty well, you know, detailed for these tasks. The tasks are identified, and, you know, they vary from $2,000 to $40,000. And the, again, you know, the total for the recommendation for what we need to do for FY '24 is 126,500.
Mr. Chairman.
Counsel Marquetti.
This is the point that I'm trying to make here. It's very confusing. I think it needs to be fully vetted at general government. It won't take them very long, and then they can bring it back. If they say this is a good idea, then okay, I'm okay with that. But I would like it to be vetted at Subcommittee level. That's what the Subcommittees are for. Thank you.
All right. We have a motion to refer to general government. Counsel Montigny, would you like to speak to the motion to refer?
Yes, I would. I'd feel a lot more comfortable making my, casting my vote if I could ask the town manager. Do you know the answer to this question? In 12 months from today, say we don't spend any free cash from right now, and we still have 1.744, okay, how much free cash will we have at the end of next year? Do you have any idea on how to forecast that?
Well, we can look at what has happened historically. And, for example, last year, you know, to me, this is sort of a conservative approach. Last year, you spent all the free cash. In other words, when you had, you're starting out with 3.9 million, all that cash was spent last year. You went forward with no free cash. What I'm trying to do is at least preserve some free cash, because one of the things I do know that's going to happen next year, and we discussed this during the discussion we had on the health insurance, prior to changing to the 70 percent contribution, you were carrying an 800 to 900,000 surplus in the health budget, which is a reasonable thing to do because of the changes that occur there. Clearly, that's gone. Counsel Marquetti, when you mentioned the 4.6 million, that's what we appropriated this year for FY '24. What was appropriated last year was the 4.3 million. And when they appropriated that, they indicated to you that there was a $50,000 surplus in there for changes in plan and so forth. And clearly, we see that that is not what happened. Clearly, we had that 50,000 gone, plus because of either errors or not reporting properly when people are off the plan, we have not collected the money that we needed to from the employees in the plan. Now, certainly, active employees, you know, we get that money. But if somebody is on there, and they leave employment, they no longer have the plan, and we still carry them on the plan, then we're paying out 100 percent of that and getting nothing back. Now, we will be working carefully to try to get some of that money recovered from MIA, now that we've identified that there are several people that we should not have been paying for a good part of the year and probably into the previous fiscal year as well.
I stand by my motion. And this is too, this is just too confusing. It needs to go back. Thank you.
If I still have the floor.
Counsel Montigny.
Thank you. So pretend we have $0 in free cash right now. How much free cash are we getting next year, in the next 12 months? Do you have any ballpark estimate, 2 million, 3 million, 4 million?
I think you'll probably be in the, you know, 2 to 3 million.
2 to 3 million.
And then at that time, they can move.
So if we go back to 600 tonight...
Gentlemen, one at a time. Gentlemen, one at a time. Counsel Montigny, please.
Thank you. If we go down tonight to 625,000, which puts us just a hair below 1 percent, which Counsel Marquetti is correct, they want you to have for a good credit rating between 3 and 5 percent. I'm not sure how much that holds any weight, but, because you're saying we spent it all the way to 0 last year.
You did.
But if we're getting almost 3 million by this time next year, if we didn't spend anything, after spending all this tonight, you're saying we'd have 3.6, we'd be a hair over 5 percent. I see what you're trying to say, but I do also see what Counsel Marquetti is trying to say, to refer it back to Subcommittee, because there are some things on here that we could definitely vet a little more. The 500,000 to capital stabilization, we can do that at any time, but can you also say, do we have to balance this health insurance account deficit before July 1st? Do we have to do that?
We do have to have that money, and Christine is here to tell us, we certainly have to have that money to balance it. The other thing is, on June 30th, you know, you'll have this 1.7 billion. On July 1st, you'll have 0 in free cash, and you won't be able to spend free cash again until it's certified next February. Okay?
Correct.
So that's the whole thing. So of the two things here, well, I do think that it would be a good idea to put some money into the MS4 program, because it is something we need to do. We certainly need to pay that 119,000 for the health insurance, and I believe we need more money in the account available for the animal shelter if we want to be able to award it. I don't think the money we have is going to be enough to award it. And now, from what the chief tells me, we actually have, I think, 506,000 in there, not the 400, which is why I recommend maybe only 250 instead of the 350 that I did recommend. The other part of it is that if we appropriate this money, particularly, say, for the animal shelter... shelter, and we don't have to spend that, then that goes back into free cash. I mean, so that's the way it is.
Okay, thank you. Isn't it more like October, not February for free cash certification?
It was February 21st that it was certified last year. And I don't believe he ever had it certified earlier than that. I could be wrong.
Good, thank you.
Counselor Rivas, then Counselor Lazo.
I have a question about, I do want to hear from...
Are you speaking to the motion to refer?
Yes.
Thank you.
I do want to hear from the chief and from Kristen. I have a question about, when was the last time that the health insurance account was audited? Do we...
I don't know. It certainly needs to be.
Thank you.
Very good. Counselor Lazo.
To the chair, to the town manager, when is the bid opening for the kennel?
It is Thursday.
Thursday. I'm, I'm a fan of the vetting it at that subcommittee would stop all this debate. And we would have a solution coming forward with people, you know, knowing ahead of time what we have to do. As far as the bid opening, I would rather see, go to subcommittee, see what the exact numbers are. And if it's a week, we're going to know exactly what we're doing. And I know in some cases, we transfer money and they always say the money goes back into the account and somehow it would always get spent on the project. So for myself, I'm going to support referring back to the subcommittee. I don't know, procedurally, I feel comfortable with it. Financially, I understand what we have to do. I just didn't know why this didn't go to the subcommittee earlier before tonight. That's the only thing I'm saying. I'm sure Gus could have handled it. Thank you.
Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to, to move it back, I'm looking at the 119 that needs to be paid. And I don't see a reason why we should even hold off on that. MS4, obviously, we need to move forward. Yeah, I'm in favor of obviously going to subcommittees with these things, but this has been a different year. We're talking about the capital finance committee. Now, there are some great volunteers out there, but I got to tell you, we couldn't even get a $100,000 truck pushed through us without the proper paperwork. I mean, something went really, really wrong. And I hope whoever the chair is next year will continue that and maybe make it a little bit better. But that was the first year and we had our town accountant leave, our finance director leave, our town manager leave. So there was a lot of changes that we had to, we had to be flexible through the whole process. And I understand, maybe capital stabilization, fine, take that off. I have no problem with that. But when we're talking about MS4, that's something that's going to be needed. Yeah, it's unfunded, but we've had plenty of time to reach out to our state senators and representatives and try to figure out where those letters may be already. Health insurance has to be paid. Or you take the money out of stabilization or you take it out of, I don't know, let's take it out of capital. I don't care at that point in time if that's what we want to do. The animal shelter, how long are we going to wait on this animal shelter? Holy cow. Okay, so we try to do it next year, start taking out a stabilization or capital council if we have to. I think the chief did the best he could when he gave an estimate of what it was going to be like. Just because he didn't ask for it doesn't mean, you know, we shouldn't be flexible anymore and say, shame on you for not figuring out, being a bean counter. And he should have been a better bean counter and trying to figure that stuff out. So to me, fine, capital stabilization, push it back, take it off the records and give us 1.1 million in free cash down the road. But these other things, we got to start moving forward with this stuff. We're looking at towns right now doing two and a half overrides and they're, they're cutting places all over the place because they're not thinking of ahead. So if we're not thinking ahead, we're going to be in the same boat down the road. So I don't care who's rolling over in their grave at this point in time. We have to move forward in this process. And it's okay, bring it back to general gov, you know, after the reorganization on the capital stabilization fund and maybe move that stabilization from one place to another. Doesn't matter. Some of these things have got to get paid. When those bids start opening back up, we got to move forward on this animal shelter. We're getting charged every month from Oxford for keeping our dogs and our animals there. So we're going to continue to pay out of pocket as long as we delay. Thank you. And I know there's, by the way, I know there's other funds out there that we can utilize. I got it. Thank you.
Counselor Steves, I'd like to get the councils first. Thank you, George.
A couple of points. First off, as far as delaying this goes, there's two issues that we need to address. First off, as of the end of this week, Gen Gov basically ceases to exist because I'm gone and Jackie's gone. And so, so if we want to refer to it, we'll probably refer to it to another committee. The other situation is the fact that also as of the end of this week, this money doesn't, we cannot use this money, as the manager mentioned a few minutes ago. So if we, so if we want to fund these, regardless if we send it back to subcommittee and vet it and are entirely in favor of it, we would end up having to take it out of either stabilization or someplace else because we wouldn't be able to use the free cash to do it. That's the, that's one advantage of using free cash and one advantage of doing it now. While I agree with you in general that it would have been nice to be able to vet this at subcommittee, under the circumstances, it is, it makes some sense, I think, to do it now. And I agree with Counselor Adams on this one, as I think these, some of these things really do need to get done. I think the idea of throwing, quite frankly, throwing the rest of the, the money that we don't specifically allocate to some of these other things, the MS4 program, the health insurance thing and the animal shelter, I think the rest of the money that we have currently sitting in free cash, we should throw in stabilization in case we really need it. We won't have, you're right that while we will technically not have the free, the free cash flowing around, it will still be available if we need it. Whereas it will disappear at the end of the week if we don't use it for something. Stabilization, capital stabilization, put it somewhere. We won't be able to get to it again.
Counselor Dow.
Thank you, Chair, for you. Nobody against the kennel, the dog kennel. We all support with, just the way that agenda came in, it's not too many detail or clear. If I withdraw my motion, you can, somebody else amend just to prove the important item and we return the back, whatever we have to discuss, or all have to be approved tonight. Because some item you say you have to be paid, like...
We can break them out. Last time we had a situation, we did break it out.
So I will withdraw my second for the motion.
I think Counselor Steves...
Which motion she, he withdrew his second for?
We have a motion on the floor right now to refer to Gen Gov. Who made the motion? Who seconded it?
He made the motion.
No, Counselor McKeddie made the motion. Counselor Dow seconded it.
Okay. You wish to withdraw your, your second in the motion?
My second.
Okay. Does anyone else wish to second?
Just the whole idea, the way that agenda came in.
Yes.
I'll second it.
All right. So Counselor Dow, Counselor Dow withdrew his second to the motion to refer. Counselor Lazo makes the second to refer to Gen Gov. Okay. Is there any further discussion on the motion to refer? Please, Counselor-elect.
I didn't hear Counselor Steves because every time he turns his head, we can't hear him.
Sorry about that.
We're going to put blinders on him so he looks at the microphone. Mr. Town Manager, did I hear you correctly say that July 1st, any funds that are left in the capital go to zero? Did I hear you say that?
Yeah, that's what happens. You really have no free cash to use again until it's recertified. Now, it really doesn't go away.
No, no, I understand that.
And if you end up with 1.7 million, that 1.7 million will still be the next year unless, as the whole year goes forward, some other deficit occurs, like this borrowing we didn't do or something else like that. So in other words, they look at the whole situation of the community and they see, okay, this is what you've taken in, this is what you've spent, and this is what you have left over. So...
So come July 1st, they could use that money if it was referred back and they didn't act on it until a statement?
You, you won't have an opportunity to appropriate free cash again until it's recertified next year.
Recertified, okay, thank you.
That's what the bottom line is.
Thank you.
You know, as I said to start on this thing here, this was my recommendation. And again, it's more conservative than what you've done in the past because last year, you did spend all of the free cash. There was no free cash left at the end of the year. You spent it all. Okay? Now you got it recertified, you got free cash, that's great. So, I mean, as far as the capital stabilization fund, it was a suggestion. If you're comfortable, you have enough in there, that's fine. I do think it would be a good idea to put some money in the MS4 program. I certainly think we need to pay the 119,000 for the health insurance deficit. And I do believe you need more money if you really want to go forward with that animal shelter, because I don't believe the bids are going to come in at $500,000. So it's up to you. I mean, I'm not trying to take your money or anything. I'm just trying to advise you on what I think I would do if you want to continue with some of these things.
Right.
Okay, further discussion on the motion to refer? Counselor Lazo.
Just a comment on the free cash. We have town managers in the past that thought free cash was capital. St. Angelo, the list smarts, Mike, the previous manager. It was like at the end of the year, we were healthy in free cash because we always raised taxes. And our capital fund, that's why they formed the capital committee, is because we used to use, I say we as a community, under the advice of the manager, would use cash at the end of the year as capital. And we would spend all the free cash on capital. And then the fire sale was on. So we need, I'm not disagreeing with some of the stuff that's on here. I think I have a bigger problem with maybe the stabilization fund, not the animal shelter, not the insurance in the MS4. But the thing is, if it would have went to subcommittee, this discussion would have happened. I'm talking procedural. So for me, when I'm, when I'm looking at this, we need to change how we do the budget with the department ads. I know previous town managers have told them, don't put it in there. At the end of the year, we'll just spend what we have. So I think we just get a, get a grip on our budgets a little bit and change how we do that, which is something we can work on. The motion to refer is strictly procedural as far as, it should have went to General Gov long before this. So I think with all the moving parts, with the new treasurer and the new accountant, and we're finding out that maybe everything wasn't all as hunky-dory in the finance department as we thought it was, and we are going to strain that out under the new leadership. But that free cash thing has always killed me when they spend it at the end of the year. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion to refer? Please.
Through you. When it comes to the health insurance account, this account, the bills have already been paid. All of the funds that was due back to the town being reimbursed from the employees have already been posted. This is a true deficit in our account. There's no recouping these funds. If this account is left in a deficit, as of the end of the fiscal year, I'm going to have explaining to do to our auditors. This account needs to be fixed by June 30th. I don't have the chance to extend this to subcommittee. This has to be fixed prior to the end of the fiscal year. I did reach out to Karen, the former town accountant, and she did confirm with me that my pulling of the year-to-date budget report that's showing this deficit is the accurate number as far as how she would pull the report and identify the same information, because I did reach out to her. As far as the management and tracking of this account and these expenditures, this is not the responsibility of the town accountant's office. I just so happened to look at it and confirm and find this deficit.
Counselor Montigny.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to amend the amendment to say, refer the capital stabilization fund 500,000 back to subcommittee so that we can actually hear the other three items.
And pay the other three?
Correct. Just to make a motion to amend this so it refers only capital stabilization and we'll continue to hear the other three tonight.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion to amend the amendment to refer to the capital stabilization fund item to Gen Gov.
Correct.
Okay. Everyone follow that?
Yep. And if I could speak to it?
I'm sorry?
If I could speak to that amendment?
Certainly.
Thank you. Counselor McKeddie's concern is, is my main concern as well. There's one of the few things I learned as being cable station manager here is that at the time, the credit 3% to 5% is what we need. Now, if the town manager's projections is around 3 million for what we'll have next year, if we went down to zero, I'll go conservative and say 2.5. If we were to fund the other three items tonight and then receive even just 2.5 conservatively in February, we'll have 4.88% free cash, which puts us right at the top of 5%. I, I do think that we need to get a grip on the things next year when we do budgeting and it can help eliminate some of this process. But again, I think the capital stabilization fund, there's no way that we go through it all by February. I think it'll be healthy to debate it when it gets time to be certified. And we will be opening up free cash at that moment with somewhere around 5%, maybe even a little over, which is why I'd like to support the amendment to the amendment. So we just refer back the half a million for capital stabilization and hopefully return to the main motion and, and support the other three. Process and procedure, it is not right. But I, I think we have to, we've discussed it here. It's been on the agenda. It should have went to subcommittee, yes, but here we are talking about it. And I think we have to do what we can do to clean up in a year where we lost all these people. And in a year where, clearly, we have to pay the health insurance deficit. I mean, number one. But I feel comfortable, because we'll be sending it back 1.76% as we await the rest of the certified free cash in February. Thank you.
Counselor Steves, you wish to address the amendment to the amendment?
The only thing I wanted to point out is that, I'm just thinking, it might be easier if we withdraw both amendments and just take them and separate all of these items and vote them separately. But whatever, at this point.
Very good. Mr. Manager. Yeah, if I could, I would like to just clarify that my projection for free cash next year was sort of a wild guess based on what you've had. I mean, I don't have any way to say what's really going to happen with this thing. I do know that when you had the roughly 3.9 million starting last year, you did spend it down to zero and you ended up with 2.9 million, as we saw from the beginning here. So assuming not a lot of other things have changed, you'll probably have a reasonable, you know, free cash balance next year with the one warning that I know of one line item that had a surplus that no longer has a surplus, which is why we're actually talking about this 119,000. That's a big change in the way the budget has been. So as far as referring that back, I mean, you can certainly refer that, but I mean, there will be nothing to appropriate until next year. So I mean, you can talk about whatever you'd like to have in that capital stabilization fund, but there's not really anything to refer to another meeting unless it occurs, you know, before June 30th. Because if June 30th, you will not be able to appropriate any free cash until next year. So again, just thought there on what's going on. Counselor McKeddie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The problem with waiting till next February and saying, well, we're going to have plenty of money next February, is then next February is right at budget time and then once again, we're going to deplete all the free cash. So what's the point of having a policy where you have 3% to 5% of your general operating budget in free cash if when you get that 3% to 5%, you immediately spend it? So the state's recommendation is to have a sound financial policy, 3% to 5% of your annual budget. This goal helps deter free cash from being depleted in any particular year. So if you're going to wait till next February and then a month later, spend the whole thing like we usually do, then there's really no point in having that policy whatsoever. So I'm still in favor of deferring it back to general government. I think that's where it belongs. It should have been fully vetted. If she, if the, I'm sorry, the treasurer... Okay, if you, if you, if this was such a major concern, this should have been brought up at budget time, but it was not. We, I, I sat at the general government subcommittee when this, this account was brought up and it was very confusing to me. You talked about the 70-30 retirees, 50-50 split, which was not taken into account. You talked about Maya suggesting some changes, paying the premium for Medicaid, something called a full 65 for retirees would save us a lot of money. The meaning itself was totally confusing. I didn't think that we were totally prepared. And in the end, we voted for $4.76, $4,760,000. What you sent me tonight was the FY... I thought it was the FY '24. If it was the FY '23, it was a little confusing to me and that's why I still say I would prefer this go back to general government. And that's it. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Move the question.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to move the question. We have to vote on the motion to move. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, seven to one, the motion passes. It meets the two-thirds threshold. So we're moving the question. The amendment to the motion is to refer only the capital stabilization item to gen gov. Am I correct?
Voting on the amendment to the amendment.
Amendment to the amendment. Okay, I know, this is great. No, no further discussion, it's been moved. Okay, all those in favor? One, two, three, four, five. Against? Two? Six to two for referring it to the capital stabilization to gen gov. Okay. Now...
That leaves the motion.
We now have a motion. Right. We now have a motion which is to refer the capital stabilization item to gen gov. Everyone else said on that? We had to vote the amendment to the amendment, now we're gonna vote the amendment which is to move it to, move capital stabilization to gen gov. That's great.
I'm gonna check the video on this one.
We're black with the minutes. That's right.
You're correct.
All right. All those in favor? Opposed? I believe that's seven to one. So now we have an agenda item which would be to vote to appropriate...
$550,000.
Six hundred, well, the other three items remain the same. So it would be vote to appropriate $619,000 from free cash for fiscal year '24 MS four program at $150,000, health insurance account deficit at $119,000, and animal shelter additional funds at $350,000. Those are the original numbers. Nothing of those numbers have been changed yet. And the capital stabilization fund amount of $500,000 to be referred to gen gov. Everyone clear on that? Before we discuss. Everyone clear?
That's mine.
All right, Mr. Manager first, then Counsel Lazo.
I would recommend that you not put $350,000 into the animal shelter. I think all you need is $250,000.
$250,000?
$250,000, right?
$250,000.
Can you answer my question?
Okay, so you don't need to discuss?
I would offer an amendment if you're not gonna change it. If it's $250,000, I'm good. Thank you.
Well, you have to offer the amendment.
I offer an amendment for $250,000.
All right, so we have an amendment by Counsel Lazo, a second by Counsel Montigny to amend the animal shelter additional funds from $350,000 to $250,000, which changes the total appropriation amount from $619,000 to $519,000. Sue, how you doing?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, you sure?
Yeah.
All right, we'll move on from here. Any discussion on the amendment, the motion as amended?
On the amendment, we haven't voted on the amendment yet.
You're right, we have to vote on the amendment first. It's getting confusing. We're gonna vote on the amendment. Counsel Lazo, you wish to discuss?
I'm ready to vote.
Very good. Let's vote on the amendment for the $250,000. All those in favor? Opposed? Seven to one, Counsel Marquetti against? Very good. So now, the amounts are fiscal year '24 MS four program, $150,000; health insurance account deficit, $119,000; animal shelter additional funds, $250,000, for a total appropriation of $519,000. Anyone wanna check my math? We all set? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I mean, Joe did ask for a roll call.
You want a roll call?
Yeah, for a roll call.
You want a roll call?
Yes, for a roll call.
Okay, roll call.
Roll call.
That's fine.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yeah.
Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti?
No.
Counselor Montigny?
Yes.
Counselor Rivas?
Yes.
Counselor Steve?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Motion passes. Seven to one? Okay, seven to one? I believe we made sausage. Okay. Wow. Item number 35, vote to appropriate $89,966.49 IMA payment to the town of Charlton for fiscal year '22 from the Water Retained Earnings Act account 610450.569300 for the Charlton IMA payment.
So move.
Motion by Counsel Lazo, second by Counsel Dow, Mr. Manager.
Okay, thank you. I would just like to point out, so you'll have $1,225,052 left in your free cash after that vote, which I think is a good thing to have, so I certainly, you know, support that. I have no trouble with that. So, the next thing we have here is the water retained earnings. And, you know, one of the things I'd like to kind of explain a little bit as to why some of these things have been late is that, you know, there really was a pretty big impact here. Not having, you know, your DPW director for a whole year, not having the finance director stay here. I went through this thing and realized, because I saw the intermunicipal agreement, that we had to do this, all right? So first I went to the water department and said, okay, you know, what do you have of this? Well, I don't have much on it, you know, we only do, you know, the, we tell how much water is used. So, I went through everyone and there was really nobody here left that had really worked on this. I mean, fortunately, Tara did find, you know, some spreadsheets and so forth, we worked on it. And so I had to reconstruct this. So something that would normally take somebody not much time at all to go through and do this, it did take me quite a while over a period of days to get enough information to know really what we're doing with this. So, we had certified retained earnings in the water enterprise fund of $749,686. Now, Christine has brought something to my attention that's gonna make a little change to this, which is kind of interesting. We'll get into that later. So then we decided, okay, how do we find out, you know, what we actually do for billing? So, you know, fortunately, I met with Lonnie and Matt in the office, in the collector's office, went through and was able to, you know, pull out information to find out exactly how much we collected, you know, for the whole system over the whole year, how much went to Charlton, backing out Millennium and so forth. So, I'm comfortable and confident that these numbers are correct. So, based on the agreement we have with Charlton, we would need to pay them $89,966.49, and that's agenda item number six. Now, last year, you went through, you had some other appropriations in the water stabilization fund, in the water enterprise fund, but then you transferred the rest into the water stabilization fund. You don't do that in the sewer, so I didn't do that in the sewer. So, my recommendation here is really to put the rest of the retained earnings into the water stabilization fund. So, later this evening, or earlier this evening, I should say, I got an email from Christine pointing out that the actual money that we have in the water retained earnings is 26 cents less than this. So, there must've been rounding off between what we've got the state and so forth. So my recommendation would be to still vote the $89,966.49 on agenda item 36, but I believe that with the 26 cents we have to make up, the rest of the money that would go into the water stabilization fund would be $659,719.25.
Killing two words with one style. Okay. Any discussion on item 35, the IMA payment? Let's start with Counsel Lazo.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick comment. We're the only community that own their water company, own their infrastructure all the way. We own the franchise for Charlton. There was a gentleman, a town manager, temporary town manager, Kevin Pecos, who negotiated this water deal. When we were interviewing him for an interim job, I asked him about it and he said we weren't supposed to be paying them. And it was a funny conflict of interest when he went to Charlton as an advisor to finish the water deal after he started in Southwood. So, I never understood it. I was one of the architects of the purchase of the water company back in the eighties and I looked at this and I think it's shameful that the town owned the franchise, owned the lines, owned the company, and we're paying somebody else to supply them water. It just still, it just stinks and it doesn't make sense to me. But, if there is a legal document that says we have to do it, we have to do it. It's just a bad deal for Southwood. Thank you.
Counsel Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As with the last agenda item, this never went to DPW and I think all of these items need to be fully vetted at the subcommittee level. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Seven to one, Counsel Marquetti against. Motion passes. Item number 36, vote to appropriate $659,719.51 from Water Retained Earnings account number 610450.569300 to the water stabilization fund.
So move.
Well, I think it's changing 25 cents.
I can't change it.
Oh, sorry.
That's all right. Okay, motion by Counsel Lazo, second by Counsel Steve's. Very good. Mr. Manager spoke to the item. Can I have an amendment, please, to change the amount to 25 cents? $659,719 and 25 cents. Motion by Counsel Steve's, second by Counselor Adams. We'll amend the amount. Any discussion on the amendment for the amount as per Counsel Steve's and Counselor Adams for the amendment? Okay? Okay, very good. No discussion on the amendment? All those in favor? Opposed? Seven to one, Counsel Marquetti against. The motion passes. So, the new motion reads, vote to appropriate $659,719.25 from Water Retained Earnings account number 610450.569300 to the water stabilization fund. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Counsel Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. As I said with the previous agenda, this always comes to DPW and it did not come to DPW this year. Thank you.
Very good. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Seven to one, Counsel Marquetti opposed. Item number 37, vote to approve a DPW transfer request for $1,500 from account number 001499-521000-4900 Electricity DPW, $200 of which will transfer into account number 001499-521000-0001 Electricity various and $1,300 into account number 001499-521000-0425 Electricity Town Hall.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Steve's, second by Counsel Lazo, Counsel Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is approved at subcommittee by a 3 to 0 vote.
Very good. Any discussion? Counsel Steve's.
Just a quick comment. I've said before about other similar items. It's getting kind of ridiculous to have all these tiny, these relatively tiny transfers keep coming back to us. It really is time-consuming and unnecessary. And if we ever got around to finalizing that policy that the council approved years ago, wouldn't we be dealing with this? We'd be going home right about now.
I didn't catch a word of that.
Counsel Adams?
This is way off the agenda item about these transfers, but I'll be bringing some to the general gov, which I've already had a discussion with them, about the transfer policy. And I'm not really, well, I'm done. Thank you.
Very good. Any other discussion on the agenda item? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 38, vote to approve a DPW transfer request for $81,000 from account number 001499-51100 Salaries and Wages to account number 420000-530000-63750 South Street Water Transmission Main to cover Amendment Three for the project and reserve funds for road improvements.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Lazo, second by Counsel Dow, Counsel Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was approved 3 to 0 at subcommittee.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Seven to one, Counsel Marquetti opposed. The motion passes. Item number 39, vote to approve a DPW transfer request for $160,000 from account number 001499-51100 Salaries and Wages to account number 003499-589900-9133 Road Improvements Fund to reserve funds for road improvements.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Lazo, second by Counsel Dow, Counsel Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was approved at subcommittee by a 3 to 0 vote.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 40, vote to approve a DPW transfer request for $3,000 from account number 01499-553600 Maintenance of Streets and Grounds to account number 001499-524000 Repair and Maintenance of Equipment to cover DPW generator repair.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Lazo, second by Counsel Dow, Counsel Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was approved at DPW subcommittee by a 3 to 0 vote.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 41, vote to approve a fire department transfer for $500 from account number 01220-534600 Recruitment to account number 01220-548000 Motor Vehicle Parts and Accessories to cover the cost of vehicle repairs required for the end of fiscal year '23.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Lazo, second by Counsel Dow, Counsel Lazo.
The vote was unanimous to approve the transfer?
Any discussion? Counsel Marquetti.
The question that was brought up, through you, the question that was brought up at the subcommittee level that I had was, why is it that HR was requesting recruitment money from Council Reserve when each department had some funds in their recruitment that could've been used for her recruitment requests? Thank you.
Chief, can you address that?
Excuse me?
Can you address that question?
Yes, I can.
Please.
So to answer your question, to go back to the beginning of December or January, Ms. Harnoyes at the time said that there was not enough money in recruitment at the time due to the amount of new employees town-wide. I had an employee leave in probably September of this, of last year, so there were some funds available to create a one-time-only recruitment account for our use for the five new employees that we put on in January. So, this money that's left here in this particular account, it was left over from that. So I'm trying to transfer the money to, pays for some vehicle parts in regards to engine two that's been in and out of service waiting for parts. The human resources thing and touching base with Ms. Rubina, that was to do something different. It had nothing to do with firefighters being employed or doing their physicals or anything like that. Different department.
Well, I was at the meeting when the recruitment at HR was discussed and that's exactly what it was about. It was for recruitment, for hiring firemen and policemen. I believe it was $9,600 and she took the money from Council Reserve in order to pay for it. The only question that we had at the subcommittee level this past week was, if you have recruitment money, then some of that should've been used rather than Council Reserve. So that's what she said. I mean, that's what the agenda that she had was for recruitment for firefighters and police department.
I don't have any answers to what she said at that meeting. I do know that the recruitment account that was set up for me this year, I had some money left in it and I don't know why she didn't approach me to transfer it back to their department. It was our salary account money from the start, so that's probably the reason why.
Anyone else? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Item number 42, vote to approve an accounting transfer request for $9.32 from account number 001135-571100 Conference and Meetings to account number 001135-542000 Office Supplies to cover a missed supply invoice.
So move.
Motion by Counselor Lazo, second by Counselor Steve's. Counselor Steve's, I believe you can address this.
Sorry. I don't think we actually did this.
Didn't go to you?
I don't think that one, I think that one was taken. That was one that was been screwed up. But it's one of those things where we definitely would've approved it unanimously and I probably do complain about it.
All right. Any discussion? Counsel Lazo?
Again, I think this is one of those items, I think all councils agree that in the future, we're gonna be discussing a transfer policy and budget process and I think we really need to address everything. General government's gonna have a busy year, but there's a lot of tweaking to go on. Thank you.
Counsel Dow?
Chair, through you. I got a small question. Why most of those agenda didn't go through the subcommittee? Why came up here straight? Seems like tonight, me, you know, a lot of them came up straight here. What's the reason? We don't discuss it down, or what's the reason it came up here?
Because some of the items are coming up, are changing on a...
on a very fluid, almost daily basis. And the items need to be addressed before the end of the fiscal year. You have my word that if it was a month earlier that these numbers were coming up, it definitely would have gone to Subcommittee.
Thank you.
Right. And if I can add to that, Mr. Chairman? Part of it was also the fact that some of these items, when I was talking to Hannah for the Jenga item, some of them, I just told her to send it straight up because it was also after posting. We got the information pretty much at the last possible minute. It should have gone, but at least it's here and it's being addressed, so. And also, if I can point out just quickly, a lot of towns don't even have a Subcommittee system. We have. Everything goes straight to their council or their system, whichever it is.
Council Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. It's my own personal belief that all money should come to the Town Council. It is the taxpayers' money. I don't care if it's $9. I don't care if it's nine cents. The council is elected, the town manager is appointed. And I think the taxpayers of Southbridge deserve to have their elected officials voting on all transfers. And I don't care if it's even a nickel. That's the way I feel it should be. Thank you.
Anyone else? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number forty-three, "Vote to approve an accounting transfer request for $5,000 from account number 001132-578100 Town Council Reserve to account number 00, I'm sorry, to account number 0190000-530000 Special Services Audit to Cover Additional Charges Encurred Due to Compliance Testing for Six Major Federal Grant Programs for the Fiscal Year '22 Single Audit Instead of the Normal Three-to-Four As Originally Budgeted and Planned For."
Don't move. Second.
Motion by Council Dow, second by Council Lazo. Council Steve.
We recommended that unanimously.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number forty-four, "Vote to approve an accounting transfer request for $21,000 from account number 001132-578100 Town Council Reserve to account number 0190000-534300 Postage to Cover Postage Invoices Through the End of Fiscal Year '23."
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Council Steve, second by Council Lazo. Council Steve.
Recommended unanimously. This is a situation where a lot of the postage that we had budgeted had, it was a situation where they found that they had not enough money to cover the funds that had already been allocated into the postage machine, essentially. They put it all in and they didn't have enough left over to finish paying off the bills for the end of the year, if I remember correctly. And it's kind of one of those things where we need to get this done, so.
Any further discussion? Council Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. My only question at the time was, some of this postage came was a result of water enterprise fund bills. Some of the postage was as a result of sewer enterprise bills. And so, my question was, shouldn't that be paid from those enterprise funds? So, that was my question. And I don't know who can answer that, but that was the concern that I had. Rather than rating Council Reserve, it's not a slush fund.
No.
So, it should come out of each account. If it comes, if it's a water bill, then that's where it should come from. I understand the need to pay for the postage, however. Thank you.
Mr. Manager.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not exactly certain of that amount, but in other words, I would like to point out that we receive as revenue from the enterprise funds, roughly $600,000 from each one of them. And it is really for paying us for our share of the administrative services we supply. It would be, for example, part of the DPW director's salary, part of all, you know, the accountant, part of the treasurer. And so, I would think that, you know, possibly, and I haven't really checked in to know for sure, but I would say that it's probably within that, that that's part of what we're providing them for our administrative services. But we can certainly check into a little more detail.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number forty-five, "Vote to approve an assessor transfer request for $350 from account number 001-001141-530200 Data Processing to account number 001-001141-542000 Office Supplies Special Services to Cover Necessary Office Supplies and an Office Chair."
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Council Steve, second by Council Dow. Council Steve.
Yeah, unanimously approved.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number forty-six, "Vote to approve a clerk's transfer request for $500 from account number 00161-530500 Book Repair Binding to account number 00161-525100 Repair, Maintain Equipment to Cover the Cost of Typewriter Maintenance."
Don't move.
Second.
Motion by Council Lazo, second by Council Steve. Council Steve.
We recommended that unanimously. It's simply because of the fact that the clerk has so many specific legal forms that they have to type. It seems kind of archaic, but it's necessary.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number forty-seven, "Vote to approve a Town Council Transfer Request for $32.48 from account number 001111-578000 Miscellaneous Expenses to account number 001111-542000 Office Supplies to Cover Office Supplies for Proclamations for Town Council."
Don't move.
Motion by Council Lazo, second by Councilor Steve. Council Steve.
We recommended that one unanimously, too.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number forty-eight, "Vote to approve a Town Manager Transfer Request for $723.82 from account number 001123-519300 Other Personal Service Tuition to account number 001123-571100 Conferences and Meetings to Cover the Cost of Interim Town Managers M-M-M-A Spring Conference."
Don't move.
Second.
Motion by Council Lazo, second by Council Steve. Council Steve.
We recommended that unanimously, too. Although there was some question about having conferences at rather high-end golf resorts. But we know that that's how it works.
Any discussion? Council Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question to the town managers, what did you learn at this spring conference that would benefit the people of Southbridge?
Well, one of the big things that we had there was, you know, teamwork and working together with different divergent views and so forth. We had an overall session for one whole, you know, part of the day. So, I thought that was very informative.
Okay. Maybe you could provide us a report on that?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number forty-nine, "Vote to approve a Treasurer Collector Transfer Request for $53,500 from account number 001145-511000 Treasurer Collector Salaries and Wages Full-Time to account number 001145-53000 Treasurer Collector Special Services to Cover Invoices for Strategic Municipal Services LLC for Interim Treasurer Collector Services from February through the end of the Fiscal Year '23."
Don't move.
Motion by Council Lazo, second by Council Steve. Council Steve.
We recommended that unanimously. And just a quick explanation is that this is a situation where obviously, as you know, we appointed Lanny to be Treasurer Collector about a month and a half ago. But some of the services that the Strategic Municipal Services people have been doing is kind of helping her catch up with some of the stuff that was still kind of in limbo over time. And they were saying that it might end up, we might end up needing some of it going into next fiscal year, I hope.
Discussion? Council Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Why are we still using this service? I mean, we hired somebody full-time to do the job. I thought they were coming on board and they were experienced. They had the experience to do the job. Why are we still using this company? Especially through the end of this fiscal year? It seems to me that she's been on the job long enough.
Which one are we on? Forty-nine.
Oh, well. We really are getting, you know, quite a benefit from this person. In other words, when we hired Lanny in this, we made it clear, I think, during the discussion here that one of the things that she hadn't had experience with was units. So, there is certainly some transition training on that. There are several, I guess, issues that have developed over the past few years from the turnover we've had. I mean, there are books that, you know, haven't been balanced. There are a lot of things that are being looked at. And so, I believe that this person is providing a very real and important service to us to help make this transition happen. I mean, we have a situation where, you know, you really haven't had a treasurer here for over a year. You had somebody here who left and somebody in a short period of time. And so, a lot of things have kind of fallen through the cracks. And I think Joanne, while she was here, did more than what she was contracted to do, not just, you know, keep things going and, you know, fill out, you know, requests and, you know, process paperwork, but actually try to work on some of the issues that we have that need to be addressed. So, I believe she is needed and hopefully we'll be able to utilize her to finish the transition.
So, we will be done with this service as of next week, correct?
No, it's my understanding that money has been, you know, set aside to have a continued transition training during at least the first, you know, part of July. I had originally planned on asking for a free cash request for that because I do believe we need to have that transition continue. I think things are going very well there, but I think that there's an awful lot that has to be dealt with. But both Lanny and Joanne informed me that they have the funding to allow her to stay on into July to help with that transition.
Council Lazo.
I understood what it was. It's an overlap in training with the company. But you're answering my question. Is it the end of July is the end of it? Or how do we determine when Lanny is ready to fly her own?
Well, I would think that that is the time we need, from what I understand.
Thank you.
Further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Seven to one, Council Marquetti against, motion passes. Item number fifty, "Vote to approve a Special Articles Transfer Request for $7,100 from account number 003135-589900-9061 Special Appropriation Medicaid Billing to account number 003135-589000-8121 Special Appropriation Ambulance Billing to Cover April Through June Ambulance Billing Charges."
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Council Steve, second by Council Dow. Council Steve.
We recommended that unanimously, too.
Discussion? Council Marquetti.
If the Fire Chief is still here, could I get an explanation on this? We're taking it out of Medicaid billing and putting it into appropriation, special appropriation ambulance billing. So, why would we be taking it from Medicaid billing and putting it into another account?
I'm going to present Christine for the answer to your question.
Thank you.
Both of the accounts are underneath the Special Articles 3135. When I did some research, that Medicaid billing invoice is actually, a portion of it is paid for in GL accounts for the town and the school as far as what the billing is. So, it's something that actually gets paid out of my office. And historically, it has been paid to the UMass Medical Center and now it's switched over to New England Medical Billing. So, this is something that's managed in my office as far as the invoice that gets paid out. And because it was Special Articles, we kept the Special Article funding between the two accounts as far as to fund the account.
And what does the billing cover? Somebody can't pay their ambulance bill or?
The, as far as the ambulance billing? The ambulance billing, the ambulance billing invoices. Do you want to speak to what those are?
So, the ambulance billing, so we do have a contract with Comstar Billing Agency that we send all of our run reports to them. They code them and send them out to insurance carriers and also people that do not have insurance. Monthly, the town receives an invoice for what is collected and deposited into the account. That's what that account was for. I believe that's, and I think you're using this for a different scenario, for something completely different.
We're going to pay you at Comstar with that. We just ran out of funds in that account.
So, they did, actually, I did have a conversation with Christine and the treasurer a few months back. There was not enough funds for the annual, well, the monthly payments for Comstar. Ms. Harnoyes had kept the same amount for years moving forward. And as I've explained to you previously, we're doing more and more ambulance calls. So, it's always this percentage on how much we pay Comstar on the amount of bills that get sent out. So, this is the increase in the amount that's needed.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number fifty-one, "Vote to approve a Human Resources Transfer Request for $2,300 from account number 001132-578100 Town Council Reserve to account number 001911-514500 Basic Life Insurance to Cover Unexpected Increase in Plan Enrollment for Fiscal Year '23."
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilor Adams, second by Councilor Dow. This motion was pushed to council because of a timeframe constraint that we talked about earlier. Christine? Do you have information on this article? Fifty-one?
So, this one is for the basic involuntary life insurance, which is part of the original forty-three, the 4.3 million. But when it came to the budget request transfers, we were just looking at the basic life insurance separately from the rest of the health insurance. And that's what this budget transfer is for. Because there was a deficit due to enrollment and higher volume than anticipated and then rate changes. So, we just had to make sure we have the funds covered.
So, more people took the insurance than they expected?
For life insurance, correct.
Okay.
There was a higher enrollment than budgeted. And in past years, this $3,600 that was budgeted for the life insurance was carried and level funded over the last few years. So, it was just higher enrollment than anticipated.
Okay.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Seven to one, Council Dow against, motion passes. Item number fifty-two, "Vote to approve an accounting transfer request for $500 from account number 001135-573000 Dues and Subscriptions and $1,000 from account number 001135-514100 Longevity totaling $1,500 to Transfer Into Account Number 001135-511000 Salaries and Wages Full-Time to Cover Full-Time Salary Expenses From March Through June of Fiscal Year '23."
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Council Dow, second by Councilor Lazo. Discussion? Council Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Don't think I'm understanding this one very much. Hours expended to ARPA need to be classed to full-time salaries due to the increased support being provided to the workload in the accounting office support being provided to the workload in the accounting office while awaiting the filling of an assistant town accountant position. So could somebody explain this, what that means?
Yes. So Abby is our ARPA administrator, and currently that's her job, and that's her job and her duties. Due to the assistant accounting, assistant town accountant position being empty from February through middle of May, she actually had an increased work volume in assisting me with keeping that office running, AP warrants getting paid, and keeping that office functioning. So she had an increased volume and workload. That's actually the responsibility of the assistant accountant and myself in order to keep the office functioning. So therefore, I cannot allocate ARPA funding to cover her salary when she was in fact doing more duties associated to the actual accounting office. And in order to do so, I would need to transfer funds into the salaries budget to cover those expenses.
Any further discussion?
I just have one more.
Oh, shortly.
So what longevity pay was going?
Karen. Karen was budgeted for longevity and with her departing before her payout, those funds were available.
All right. Thank you.
Counsel. Very good. Any further discussion? All those in favor. Opposed. Unanimous of all present. 53 was moved to the beginning. 54. Vote to approve a proposed senior exercise program to take place three times per week at the Casablanca Senior Center to be paid from the state formula grant and authorize the town manager to sign related documentation.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Dow, second by Counsel Montigny. Counsel Montigny.
Thank you. I'm glad this has come back. I have a few things that I've received here. I'm sure a lot of us have received some of these letters. First was brought up to me a couple days after the vote from Pat Haddock. I'm just going through some highlights here. She heard the exercise class is being voted down. It's been held on these days for over 25 years. She understands there's some concern that the Latinos were not invited. This is untrue. It's been an open class since its inception. There's Latinos in the class. The Tuesday, Thursday class have been personally invited at several occasions. They enjoy their meetings on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Please feel free to ask Severino Rios. We don't want any false information. Then we all received a very nice letter from the instructor signed by some people that attend the class explaining that they really don't want this class to end and that there's no discrimination anywhere. And finally, from Ms. Rios herself, it was sent to the town manager and then to the chair and then to us. It was recently brought to our attention that the council is concerned about participation of Latino group and exercise classes that are offered in the center on Monday, Wednesday, Friday. Latino seniors do not participate because they choose not to. They have been invited to join the exercise class, but since most of them do not drive, they'd rather stay home or go to the RMG program. It is her understanding that the council is considering stopping the exercise classes. The Latino group asked to let you know that they do not want to be blamed for this cancellation. They appreciate very much that the town is allowing them to meet at the center and would like to continue with their program. Please don't hesitate. She's a phone call away. I think this all just goes to show you why some of us supported the no vote for postponement. And I'm honored to say that Education Human Services Subcommittee does have the pulse of the Latino community accurate, and I appreciate everybody stepping out. And I'm just so happy to hear of the symbiosis over there of all these people working together and enjoying all these programs together, no matter who they are, what day it is. I'm just honored to have seen these emails come by. I had a busy couple weeks. I haven't been able to talk to anybody myself, and this has been refreshing, and I will be fully supporting this tonight. Thank you.
Very good. Counsel Rivas.
So I want to read from our minutes that we approved earlier today. It saddens me that our seniors, and especially our Latino seniors, were told that we were going to cancel this program. There is nothing in the minutes that reflects, I can only speak for myself, but again, in watching the video, there were no counselors on this dais that recommended that our senior exercise program be canceled. Not one of us. We want to expand programming. So for someone to cause despair and grief to our seniors, it is deplorable. Whoever told our seniors that misinformation, all people had to do was call one of us or watch the video, as I'm going to read from our minutes. The question around equitable access. Being equitable is removing barriers. And from our minutes here, our comments had to do with seeing how many days the program was offered to create more access. Counsel Rivas explained that Spanish language program is only offered Tuesday and Thursday, and that information about the program is not regularly available in Spanish. There was a discussion about postponing this item to gain time to review the program offering. There was further discussion of how and if equity could be achieved for the programs and whether or not to postpone the item. Again, it was around equitable access. And between the last meeting and today, I went on the elder bus, which was one of the recommendations from Counselor Montigny. And on their site, it specifically states, "Our service is available Monday through Friday from 8:30 a.m. through 4:00 p.m. for rides within your community." A simple phone call from our staff member who we pay to service all and to create access. It had nothing to do with the exercise program or discrimination. The word discrimination was never mentioned in this meeting. Aside from that, the letter from Mrs. Rios, who I also spoke to, said, "Since most of them do not drive, they would rather stay home or go to RMG." So simply creating more opportunity by providing rides from the elder bus program that states here that is available from Monday through Friday would have cured the situation. One. Two. By providing access and information in Spanish, not everyone knew about the program. Never was mentioned whether that was intentional or not, but creating access by providing more information. We should want more for our seniors, not less, not the bare minimum, but more. Simply asking the exercise program facilitator to see if they could add a day would have remedied the situation, which I also put in a call to Ms. Reynolds to see if anyone had asked her, to see if she could extend the program to a Tuesday or a Thursday. So I will be voting to support the senior program, but it is disingenuous to say that this council was trying to cancel the program when no one here was speaking about canceling the program to our seniors. Thank you.
Counsel Montigny.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I can echo the sentiment of Counsel Rivas. Whoever said those things, it is deplorable, but I don't think it was said by anybody. Again, the only conversation I had, I actually failed to mention, I replied back to Pat Haddock immediately Wednesday morning on the 14th, and I said, "I just read this quickly. I was part of the group that voted not to postpone this. I feel that it will get approved at the 26th meeting." So I said her straight right away about it not getting canceled, but I have not had a conversation about this with anybody else. As far as someone actually going around saying, I highly doubt it because what the previous speaker might not understand about politics is that politics is perception. And the way you comport yourself up here and the way you throw motions around is going to reflect on this community. And there's a way to get things done for the communities that you support and the way that there's not. And politics is perception. They probably took this postponement as the urge to cancel it, but I have not heard of anybody actually saying those words. Again, it's perception of the people. They take what we say up here and they look at it themselves. Again, I have not spoken to anybody except Pat Haddock to set the record straight about postponement. Thank you.
Counsel Rivas.
In my conversation with Mrs. Rios, she said the seniors that called her were told, were told that the council was canceling the exercise program. So it wasn't perception. It was actually someone telling our seniors that we were canceling the program. Don't know who, but someone told them that.
Counsel, Mr. Chair.
Counselor Adams had his hand up.
No, I'll let it finish up these, but I'm going to move to the question in a minute when I get started.
Counsel Montigny and then Counselor Adams.
Thank you. I mean, that is just it. The seniors, God bless them, they watch these long meetings every week, and it's their perception that a postponement means it's going to get canceled. They came up with this on their own. Certainly didn't happen for me. I have a lot more things to focus on in this town than the best program at the senior center getting postponed. Trust me when I say I have not spoken to anybody except Pat Haddock to set the record straight. It's perception. Politics is perception, and I'd like to vote to move the question.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to move the question. All those in favor. Anyone opposed? Question is moved. Vote to approve a proposed senior exercise program to take place three times per week at the Casablanca Senior Center to be paid from the state formula grant and authorize the town manager to sign related documentation. All those in favor. Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Very good. Council's forum, item number 55. Counselor Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I would like to address the question that was posed at Citizens Forum concerning the postponement of the appointment to the Health Board. I did make that motion. I had received additional information about the candidate, including the makeup of the Board of Health and what their duties are. It's something that I didn't want to just spring on somebody at the meeting. I wanted to discuss it further, so I made the motion just to postpone it to the next meeting. At the next meeting, we can have a full discussion about it, and that's why I postponed it. I just didn't think it was very fair to throw that on someone without any heads up and without talking about it. So that's the only reason I postponed it. Thank you. And my second thing is, I would like to offer my congratulations to the new council that is coming forward. I look forward to working with them all, and I want to say, I'd like to say to Counsel Steve, it's been a pleasure working with you, and I wish you the best of luck. I'm sure you'll be around in your future endeavors. You'll be probably working on something at the town hall. And Counsel Ryan, I expect to see her very active in town politics going forward. So thank you very much, and that's all I have.
Very good. Counselor Montigny.
Thank you very much. Well, I'd like to offer, first of all, congratulations to Counsel Arielle Ortiz, Counsel Joseph Dow, and Counsel George Chenier. Everybody did such a great job. Everybody hustled right to the end. Congratulations to Ari Boom for taking first place. It's a great feeling. And regarding question one, I got to thank the voter for coming out and voting nearly 90% yes on question one. It was great to see all the constituents and work closely with them again this year, especially Ed Nakudomash. And I'm seriously looking forward to July 10th. But I would like to thank both Jackie Ryan for their service and Counselor Steve for his nine long years of service. It's an honor to serve with any counselor up here, but especially one that does three terms. You were here when I was station manager. We're here together now. So thank you very much for devoting your time, you and your family, to this. You know, again, I was asked to address the Latino citizens privately for that last agenda item, for my bad judgment in voting not to postpone the senior exercise program, questioning my loyalty to the Latino citizens, Mrs. Rios and the Puerto Rican community. But I'd like to address them now. Pardon my Spanish, Mr. Chair, but I will be respectful. Gente del comunidad de los Latinos y especialmente los puertorriqueños, nunca olvide de donde yo venga. Cerca de mi papá, esta comunidad es Southbridge, es la cosa más importante a mí en mi vida. Y todas las mañanas, tú sabes que yo levanto pensando de dónde mi corazón vive todavía, en Puerto Rico, en las montañas de Sida, en el lago de Sida, en la casa directo cerca de mi bien amigo Felito Felix, quien tiene muchos canciones, el libro de corazón de todos los sidreños y puertorriqueños. Todas las mañanas, yo pienso cuándo me voy a regresar a Puerto Rico otra vez. El solamente razón estoy aquí ahora trabajando contigo para esta comunidad es porque Dios me pone aquí a cuidar mi papá y mi familia. Y mi corazón es todavía viviendo en Puerto Rico. Yo me fui todos los días en Puerto Rico, excepto para preguntas porque está muy lejos para allá. Pero yo estaba chinchureo todos los sábados, a la ruta panorámica, a calle de Sida, pasando ramonitas, baravieja, a banquita, si chinchoros chiquitititos, y finalmente a la sombra en Orocoves, y el gato, y a comprar la longaniza, a cocinar, en mi casa en Sida, después lo próximo día en domingo después Iglesia. Tal vez eres un orgullo venio, y yo no soy sidreño en mi sangre, mi sangre es rojo y blanco como Southbridge y como él, pero mi corazón es todavía sidreño, y por siempre lo es sidreño. Pero no hay nunca discriminación aquí de yo, porque necesitamos hacerlo todos aquí juntos a regular esto pueblo, de una familia, esta familia. Y si alguien dice a ti que yo no soy de aquí, mira esa persona en la cara y dice en gracia baja, eres una mentirosa y sin vergüenza no habla sobre el nene. Counselor Montigny como eso, porque estamos son una familia aquí. Y mi corazón es todavía en Puerto Rico por siempre. Bendiciones y Dios los bendiga. Gracias.
I'm going to say the word you said.
I like that transferred, please.
But.
Counsel Lazo.
God bless you, Mike. I really, bilingual, it is a gift. I'd like to move on to a couple of the issues that people have already talked about. I'd like to congratulate the chairman on 25 years of happily married. I heard you had an anniversary. Congratulations. In this day and age, that's a major accomplishment. I'd like to move on to the election. I'd like to congratulate my brother over there, Joe Dow. George Chenier, probably went to bed already. And special thanks to that young kid, Ari Ortiz, a role model Hispanic. He doesn't play the Hispanic card. He just understands the few things. I want to help my community. It's the first thing he said, and how do I get involved? He's a 26-year-old gentleman that owns his own property, that is an HVAC manager for a company in town. And you know what we call that? We don't call it equity. We call it equal opportunity for each and every walk of life in this community. And this kid stepped up to the plate. A hundred doors an hour here. I've been in politics a long time. A hundred doors an hour, you're really moving. I congratulate you on your work ethic, your accomplishments, and the role model that you are to the youngest Hispanics of the community. I also want you to know, when I was elected, I was 27. You are the youngest elected official that I know of in my time at age 26, unless Dave Adams is younger than that. Moving on, our school district, we had an 87% vote to take our schools back. We know it's non-binding, but it's the will of the people. It's symbolic. Our receiver said, "Ah, that's nothing. It's only 1,100 people voted." Obviously, you know, coming from him, and I expect it. He also hired a public relations firm to beef up the image of our school district. Instead of doing it through MCAS scores and undefeated football teams and various other accomplishments by our children, we're going to get a public relations presentation. And finally, I'd just like to say to Jackie Ryan, I've won some and I've lost some. We learn more when we lose than we do when we win. I wish her the best of luck. We had, I thought, a good relationship, a lot of passion between our politics, but for the most part, Jackie's a hard worker. You can't take that away from her, and hopefully we'll see her in the future. As far as my good friend Gus Steves, I'm running about 50/50 with him on agreeing, agreeing and disagreeing. But the thing that makes this council and these people special, Gus Steves never gets personal. He might get a little passionate. He might have a good floor fight, but he does not get personal. He's been an excellent counselor, and I think moving forward, he's always going to be involved in some way, shape, or manner, whether it be down in boards and commissions or maybe even to come back in the future. And Gus, I wish you the best of luck in the future. Mr. Chairman, I think you did a fine job this year. You had to carry that vice chairman all year long, and I think that with those heavy things on your shoulders, I think you did a great job. Thank you both for being the leadership of the town council.
Thank you. Counsel. Very good. Counsel Rivas.
So I want to start off by addressing the sort of the postponement of Nicole Duffy's So I want to start off by, um, addressing, um, the, sort of the postponement of Nicole Duffy's, um, reappointment, and just talking a little bit about what she's done this year, um, to help our town and help the Board of Health, which was struggling to get full membership. Really being, um, part of, um, the conversations around the ad hoc curbside trash. In installing a housing resource assistance presentation that was offered at the library to our community, and really working around housing and a lot of different issues, um, helping residents who had mental health issues when it came to, um, uh, people that had to be moved out of their homes because of different issues around hoarding or, um, different things that needed attention in the past, but that she really tackled this year, um, continuing the beautify Southbridge, having it twice, uh, um, in the year, being out there, um, you know, with the groups and, you know, as part of one of the days. Um, but really helping to expand that. So many of our students were part of beautifying Southbridge, um, and really, uh, you know, um, following rules and regulations. It's not easy to, to be that person, to, that ask questions and hold people accountable, um, you know, but you did do that this year, and, um, and I hope that in considering her reappointment, that we stick to the skills and the talent that people bring rather than personal preferences, um, and thinking about, um, you know, how people have moved those boards forward, um, rather than, you know, what, what we prefer. Aside from that, I want to mention, uh, I went to the Art Center Midsummer Festival, um, last weekend. It was a great event. Um, the Art Center puts on, um, some wonderful events for the community, for families, um, a lot promoting local artisans and their, um, and their creations, and I think that is a great event and a great activity. Um, I was also, um, honored to be part of U-Winc's, um, Southbridge Community Connections Family Fun Day at RMG on Saturday. The event had to be moved to a different venue because of the rain and the weather, and people came out to that event. There was the farmer's market, people were getting fresh fruit and produce, um, platanos, a lot of different, um, fruit that, you know, is, uh, is available, you know, for our, you know, our Latino community and other communities, um, in Southbridge that, you know, that those products are expensive when you go to the store. Um, there were lots of different, um, raffle prizes. There are, uh, quite a few organizations, um, I can't name them all, uh, who were there engaging with our community and our residents of all different ages, families. Um, it was a great event. Once again, um, I think it's like the third or fourth year that they've put it on. I also, lastly, want to address, um, uh, my Latino community. Boricua de corazón y de sangre, y el sol no se tapa con un dedo. So dime con quién andas y te diré quién eres. Thank you.
Very good. Counsel Dow. Counsel Dow.
Thank you. Uh, I want to say congratulations to Ariel Ortiz and George Chenier. Uh, I look forward to work with you. Counsel Steve, thank you for your service. Uh, was a pleasure working with you up here. Same thing, Counselor Jackie Ryan, I wish you luck, and, uh, we're here. Thank you.
Save you for last, Counsel Steves. Go for it.
Um, thank you. Um, I kind of said a lot of, a lot of what I was going to say last week, but, um, just to say thank you all for your participation. And thank you, I think I learned a lot from everybody here. Um, and you're right, I'm definitely not going anywhere. Um, you'll see me around town hall. At the very least, I'll still, still be over there keeping an eye on you guys. But, um, it's, it's definitely been a learning experience up here. It's a very different perspective, you know? You, you see a lot of different things when you're on this side of the dais versus sitting over there with a notebook in your hand and, and see how things work and, and really see the sausage making that we saw a little while ago. And I've enjoyed it. Um, so thank you all for all of your input and everything that you guys have, have done. And, uh, and thank you to anybody who's watching out there and all of, all of the people of the community for your votes in three elections, and, um, I will be back. And if you have any, um, any comments or questions, um, I still intend to be involved. So, you know, you have my email, my email's still out there, it's still the same. I can, I'll keep the same, my same account going. Um, and thank you for everything. Um, I just want, I do want to point out a couple of things, uh, of events recently. I also went to the Art Center event that, that Ja- uh, Jasmine mentioned, and, um, that was a great, it's something that, it kind of makes me think of the fact that, that, you know, there is a lot to be, a lot to do in this community that people need to take advantage of, and we occasionally hear people say that there isn't, but it's there. Uh, just turn out and do some of it. The, uh, I was also had the, the pleasure of being at the Rebuilding Futures graduation at the hotel, um, on Friday. And it's, it's a new program, it's a new central program for the first year, and it's always a good thing to see people who, our society has a tendency to cast away, get a second chance at making a new life for themselves. That's always a good thing to see, and we always need to see more opportunities for that, that kind of thing to happen. Um, so I, I'm glad to see that they were doing that. I also wanted to point out that on Wednesday, um, you have the, uh, the library is doing a talk on Quabin, the Quabin towns. For those of you who are kind of history buffs and especially Massachusetts history. And, um, there's one more thing I wanted to say. And, oh yeah, and, and Sunday I had a chance of sitting in on a concert in the Common. They started up again. Um, they're gonna be every Sunday at six, and, uh, this, this week was Carlos O'dreya Trio, and it was very good. I, he deserved to have about five times as many people there as were there, but he was excellent as always. And so, uh, it'll be every Sunday, so the long list is, should be on the website somewhere. Uh, but there's, there's flyers everywhere, so, uh, please participate, get, get involved. And also, speaking of that, um, for those of you who are watching, we are in need of, serious need of people on boards and commissions. I've said this repeatedly, we still are. And to get, so please get involved, get, come in down, come down to town, town, down to town hall, title the manager's office, bring your name in to get involved in whatever you're interested in, there's dozens of frequencies. So please get involved. This is our town, not just, it's not just our town up here, it's our town collectively, and it only works if we're all involved. Um, that was one of the big things, that I got involved because I wanted to kind of, uh, I guess, demonstrate that, you know, we can get involved and we need to get involved, and everybody needs to do, do something. We can't just let people, we can't just let the people up, up the dais be the ones who run the show. Everybody else needs to be involved. Um, and again, uh, congratulations, Joe, for being reelected. Congratulations to Ariel and George for your elections. Um, and, uh, good luck. As you have seen, it's not as easy as sometimes it looks, and George has seen that years ago, so he'll see some of the changes. And Ariel, good luck. You will find it, uh, a, a learning curve, but I think you can do it. So, thank you all for participating.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, I also wanted to, I, I forgot to thank Counselor Steves and Counselor Ryan, um, for serving on the council, especially Counselor Steves for so many years. It isn't easy, um, to be up here, um, and to, you know, you, you gotta put a lot of time into reading all of those documents and, um, being ready, um, you know, bringing receipts, and so forth, but, um, but you served our town really well. And, uh, I look forward to seeing you, you know, um, continue to hold us accountable on the other side as a reporter. Um, and Counselor Ryan, um, you know, it's your, uh, it's just the beginning, right? It's not over for you. Um, we know that you will be, um, continuing to help our community, um, and to help us in a lot of different aspects. Um, you are a voice that is needed, um, in town government and in other, um, areas in our community. So I look forward to working, continuing to work with you, um, in the community. And I want to wish congratulations to all of the, the new counselors and returning counselor. Um, you know, we have a lot of work to do, and, uh, I look forward to working with everyone. And believe me, I, I might not agree with you, but I will work with everyone, um, as long as you work with me. So, we all love Southbridge, and, uh, we want what's best for our community. We might have different ideas on how to get there, um, but we all are very passionate about this community. So thank you.
Gus?
Yeah, I just want to say one more quick thing, um, about Jackie, and it's been a pleasure working with her, I wish she were here tonight. And it's something that she has been one of the, uh, she, she's an inspiration, because I remember she was one of the youngest elected officials I think I've ever met, back when she was on the school committee in Sturbridge. And, you know, uh, very, very briefly, she was actually in the Green Party, um, before she decided to, to sell out to the Democrats. But in the, but, but, um, she, her, her passion and her interests and her focus have remained regardless of what label she wears, and that's what matters. And, uh, and that's, and I think it's high, what you were saying about our community, is that there's so many of the things that we let the labels get in the way of the fact that we have, the common ground is what matters. All of us are trying to focus on what we want that, that to benefit the, the community as a whole. Sometimes we see what that community is a little bit differently, but almost, in almost every case, it's more than just us, and that's what matters. So thank you all for.
Very good. Vice Chairman Adams.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, congratulations to the three, uh, new counselors coming in, maybe two new counselors, one old one. But congratulations to you, well-earned, all that kind of stuff, and I, I wish you nothing but the best in the next few years that we're, we're here together. To Jackie, um, I know it's a hard loss sometimes, but the fact is, uh, God has a plan sometimes, and then your new chapter in life changes things, and, and you find out that, uh, sometimes it's, it's a better move for some reason, and you just have to take those things and move forward with it. So I wish her nothing but the best. I wish she was here this evening, so I could say that to her face, and, and I, I do truly wish her nothing but the best. Gus, I'm surprised nobody gave you a flak jacket, helmet. Maybe we should've got some riot gear for you over the last nine years. But I wish you nothing but the best. I know you'll still be around here for quite some time. And I also want to thank Maureen for allowing Gus to be up here, uh, for all this time and being such a loyal partner to him, uh, by sitting here, because my wife would never last this long, ever. I think she's probably sleeping right now, so thank you, Maureen. So I just, I, I wish everybody, I, I, and I do think Charlie's running out of his time for this week, so I gotta make it quick. We don't want to see him until Monday. I, I, you know, the town council this year, I've heard, like, some individuals walk around and say, but, you know, we didn't really accomplish anything, but let me tell you something. If you worked through the pandemic, you know there's been a lot of accomplishments and a lot of heart, heartache. If you were the one that wasn't participating, wasn't do, I'm telling you right now, you missed out on an adventure of a lifetime. And, and this culminated this past year of the mass resignations worldwide and all that kind of stuff. You know, but we're finally getting back to a stable term, and I think the, the town has done a, a fine job trying to bring these people back in. But as Charlie and, uh, you know, some of us saw tonight, we, we have to be flexible about what we do. Sometimes it's just not as black and white, and to progress the town and not hold it back, you have to move forward, uh, by the laws that are given to us, and the town council ultimately has that authority and not the subcommittees. I, so I do look forward to this next year, and I expect the same progress to continue on and hopefully build upon that. You know, some of the accomplishments, you finally got the town council curbside finally after freaking five years, uh, finally passed something and moved it forward. Not everybody's gonna love it, but, you know, most of them did, and then I was told by, by, uh, many people. You're talking about, we have an interim town manager, when our town manager left us in February. And, and right off the bat, right in the middle of, um, budget season, our town accountant, our finance director left us at the same time. Christine stepped up, and Abby stepped up, and now Chris is there. We appreciate it, especially tonight. I thank you so much for being up there and telling the truth up there and explaining how, how we need to listen to this and we need to make some, hopefully, sound judgments, so I thank you. Uh, we have staff members in this town hall that are outstanding, and they've done a wonderful job, and I expect to see them promoted as we can, can promote them, and not just, uh, talk about it. So this town council has done quite a bit. It's been a lot of arguing. There's nine of us. Holy cow, I can't imagine when it was thirteen of you. It's just ridiculous, but nine of us up here trying to make the best decisions, and regardless of our own personal beliefs, we're doing the right thing by the town, and that's what we truly believe, and that's why the residents voted us up here to stay here, to do those, uh, the hard decisions here. Uh, you know, it was brought up this evening, and, uh, so I thank you guys. I really, truly do. I never asked for the town council vice chair, ever. Never asked for, the only thing I've ever asked for is a P and D chair when I first started, and I did that for five years, and maybe that's time to move on. But I will tell you, uh, Pierre, there, there's been quite a lot of, uh, changes and quick reactions and making decisions, and if, if, if there's rigid, uh, decision-making happening, it's not gonna work really well. I expect the next town council leadership to follow suit the best they can, but I know they're gonna do well for us, and I, and I expect that as well. Um, else, we're all gonna be up here until eleven o'clock at night, uh, talking about it. So anyways, I just want to continue to move on. Boards and, and boards, and boards and committees, it's an important thing for our town to get these volunteers in here. Mike and I talked this evening about the cable access. We only have one member on the cable access. My, the veterans trustees, uh, lost a couple people because they did move, and that's okay, but we'll move along. We have a strong outfit going on, but we need the volunteers in here, but we also need, as counselors, to make sure that we pay attention to what we're doing and, and get these individuals in here to help our town. There's, there's, without that staff and the volunteers, this town, we, we'd be in ruins. And I'm very proud of this town because we're not, and nothing against Dudley, they're in a Hurt Locker right now. I really feel for the people over there. And so discussion has to be had, as Mr. Chenier, uh, Chenier, uh, had explained about the fire department. It's been a long year, been a long year. I thank John over here, Counselor Daniel, for all the hard work. I know the sleepless nights and the long hours, and you're trying to work too at the same time, and everybody's throwing everything at you. You did a fine job, and I appreciate all the hard work, and, and the fact that you stepped up to the plate and you did what you had to do, and thank you for all that. There's a lot of things that were accomplished this year, and I, I could write a whole laundry list. Town manager on the twelfth of July, this town council will be voting on a new town manager for the town of Southbridge. So the agenda will be put out, and I'll be working with the current council, uh, chair and, and, uh, the, the town manager to get that pushed out there like it needs to be. I appreciate Counsel Marketti stepping up to the plate and saying why you did it, why you decided, uh, how you wanted to vote on the postpone. I appreciate that a lot. I do, wholeheartedly. May not be an answer I would like, but I, I, at least you gave an answer, and I appreciate that. Last but not least, um, I think that's it. Damn, all right. By the way, the host agreement, as a gentleman came up here about the curbside, just to let you know, I did talk to Eric today just to see where our host agreements were at. We have the three retail that are up. You have one that's no good, permit has expired. Um, you're, the lab that was supposed to come here will expire in December of this year. I don't think there's any work being done on it over there, and the cultivation place across from... Oh, yeah, I think by the fins, uh, is under new ownership, and that's gone too as well. So that's, you know, as, as our former town manager stated, it, this place has been flooded. The town, uh, the state of Massachusetts has been flooded with, uh, retail marijuana shops, and now it's, um, whoever's ever the smartest business owner will succeed. Uh, lastly, town, again, town manager, July twelfth. That's, I think, all I got. Thank you, guys, and gals. Appreciate it. Uh, next meeting? When is the next meeting? Oh, July tenth, twenty-twenty-three, here at seven, thank you, Chair. Uh, seven PM, immediately following the reorganization meeting, which will be there same evening. That's all I got. Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Dow. I expect that every time I speak. Thank you.
Counsel Steves, I recognize you for the final motion.
Oh, motion to adjourn.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second by Counsel Steves and Counsel Lazo to adjourn. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? We are adjourned.